Good evening. It is 6:00 PM. I'm calling to order. Somebody's got some echo going on up here. Calling to order the Fountain. Got it? Okay, I'm calling to order the Fountain City Council meeting for April 25th, 2023. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Roll call.
Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Mayor Potem Estes, present. Councilmember Hinton.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Rick.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Present.
All seven members present.
Thank you very much. I just want to, as we seem to have a few people here tonight, as a reminder, if you are going to speak to something that is not on the agenda under the public-to-be-heard time, if you could be sure and fill out a card that are in the back, right back by the clock, to turn into the city clerk, and it just makes things flow a little bit easier. So feel free to get up and go get one of those cards and get it passed up to the, up to the city clerk. That takes us on to item 4.1, Presentations. We have a proclamation declaring the week of April 23 through 29, 2023, as National Library Week, and I think we have some guests. Would you please come forward? Hi, thank you for coming down tonight.
Of course, we're so happy that you could have us on our, on your schedule today. My name is Shannon McDonald. I am the manager of the Fountain Library. Today is National Library Workers Appreciation Day, as well as this week being National Library Week. Libraries are bastions of community resources, so we really appreciate everybody who comes in through our doors. I have with me Mary Gapco, our teen liaison, and Mark Fletcher, our supervisor. Both of them serve our community every single day that they're in the library, and we're so grateful for our staff. They don't have anything to say, they're just here.
They don't have, your moral support.
Yeah.
Ditto.
All right. Thank you very much for coming down tonight, and we do have a proclamation to read into the record. Is there any council members who would like to read this into the record, or if not, I can read it in? If, if you would like to read it into the record, just turn your mic on, please. Councilmember Duncan?
Okay, proclamation declaring the week of April 23 through 29, 2023, as National Library Week. Whereas libraries like Fountain Library of Pike Peaks Library District and Grant Library of Fort Carson, at Fort Carson, exist to foster community and connect people with the resources and information they need to achieve their goals and reach for their full potential. Whereas libraries and librarians build strong communities through services, programs, collections, meeting spaces, and partnerships that support education, employment, entrepreneurship, empowerment, collaboration, and civic engagement. Whereas libraries provide safe and welcoming public spaces for all members of the community to access information and resources, connect with others, and freely exchange information and ideas. Whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibilities through innovation programs, innovative programs, classes and events, job search resources, online database and learning tools, and the power of reading. Whereas these trusted and treasured institutions serve as an important resource for all by offering services and opportunities that transform people's lives and strengthen communities, and this year will be celebrated with the theme, "There's More to the Story." Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Fountain, Colorado proclaim National Library Week, April 23 through, it's supposed to be 29, right? That's a typo. 2023, I encourage all residents to visit the library this week to explore what's new and engage with the librarian, done on this 25th day of April 2023.
I'll take that as a motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Hinton?
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We don't really have this set up for a vote, so we'll just, you want to just go down and do a verbal vote?
That'd be great, thank you.
Yes. Would you like me to do it, or are you going to do it?
I can do it.
Okay.
Mayor Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Hinton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Corey, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Thank you very much. As you guys know, my family is one of probably your biggest patrons down here in Fountain. I was there earlier today, and the services our, our libraries offer today are vastly different from the services that were offered when probably most of us were, were kids. You had to tiptoe in and you had to pull the book card out and sign it, and, and now you just slide it under a machine and you're out of there. You don't even have to come in, you can get the books online and so many programs and, and things going on. It's, it's really, really amazing. So thank you for all the innovative work you guys are doing within the, in the libraries to keep things traditional, but yet moving forward and modern at the, at the same time. And I, I love it when I go in there and there's the kids' artworks all over everywhere, and they're playing in the back, and, you know, it's, it's kind of noisy. And, and that's okay. So thank you very much for all your hard work, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson and City Council.
Yeah. Did you guys bring a photographer or anything, or did you want a photo, or?
We just have our Abby in the back.
I'm sorry?
We have Abby in the back.
You have Abby in the back? Is she grabbing photos for you? Okay, all right, let's go down and have a photo. All right, that takes us on to item 4.2, Board Commission Committee. We have Ms. Huffman for reappointing Brittany Diaz to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. Ms. Diaz is currently serving on our Park and Recreation Advisory Board. Her term is-
I don't think your mic's on?
It isn't, it's just not loud enough.
It's just not very loud. Get a little closer. That's better, thank you.
Ms. Diaz is currently serving on our Park and Recreation Advisory Board, and her term is set to expire next month. She is seeking reappointment to that position as a regular member for another four-year term set to expire in 2027. I don't believe Ms. Diaz is here tonight. I think she could make it.
Okay, thank you. We have a recommendation then from Ms. Huffman to reappoint Brittany Diaz, what council like to do. Councilmember Rick?
I move to reappoint Brittany Diaz to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board.
Councilmember Estes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, we have Economic Development Commission New Board Appointee, Terrence Diaz, Ms. Bailey.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Evening, Mayor and Council. Economic Development Director for your community, Kimberly Bailey. I'm pleased to present Terrence Diaz, and yes, it is a relation to Brittany that was just sworn in on the park side. So Terrence Diaz has come to us for an inaugural one-year term to serve on the EDC. He owns and operates a business in our community, is integrated with the Fountain Valley Chamber of Commerce, and is looking to broaden his depth in relations on that behalf. So I am pleased to recommend Terrence Diaz, who is with us tonight in the back of the room, on behalf of his one-year term under the EDC bylaws. Glad to address any questions, or if you'd like to hear from Mr. Diaz himself.
Mr. Diaz, would you like to come down and say anything?
No, ma'am, I'm, I'm just here for the ride.
Well, thank you for being willing to serve, appreciate it very much. Absolutely. Okay, so that is the motion from Economic Development to appoint Mr. Diaz to the board. What would council like to do? Mr. Hinton?
I make a motion to approve Terrence Diaz as Economic Development Commission Appointee.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you and, and welcome. Thank you very much. All right, that takes us on to item five, City Council Agenda Request. City councils shall use this time to request any items for future consideration. I'm going to start on my left tonight. Councilmember Rick?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Corey?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Hinton?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Estes?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Applegate?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Duncan?
I don't have anything.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us on to item six, Public to Be Heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Ms. Huffman, do you have any cards?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we have no cards. Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to address anything not on the agenda? Is there anyone online?
No one online tonight.
Okay, three, two, one. Okay, that takes us on to item seven, Consent Agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. So we have items A, B, C, and D tonight. Councilmember Rick?
Move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember Applegate?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Thank you very much. That takes us on to item eight, Old Business. Item A, Second Reading of Ordinance 1786 and Ordinance Amending Chapter 17.04, Zoning Districts, Section 17.04.120(c) 2, Regional Commercial Dimensional Requirements of the Fountain Municipal Code. Ms. Martinez?
Good evening, Kristy Martinez with the City of Fountain Planning Department. This is the second reading of Ordinance 1786, which would amend the Fountain Municipal Code to eliminate the minimum lot width and minimum lot depth within the regional commercial zone district. There have been no changes to the ordinance since first reading. So if there's any questions for me?
Okay, are there any questions from council for Ms. Martinez on this item? Seeing none, what would council like to do? Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah, I move to approve consent agendas A, B, C, and D. Oh, we're on Old Business, that's right. Yeah, I got it. Okay. Move to approve ordinance 1768 on second reading.
It's 1786?
1786.
Okay, we have a motion for the approval of ordinance number 1786. Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Did I say it right? 1786, okay, thank you. All right, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
That's what they give for daydreaming here.
All right, that takes us on to item nine, A, New, Under New Business, Consideration of Items Removed From the Consent Agenda. Nothing was removed. Item B, First Reading of Ordinance 1787 and Ordinance Amending Chapter 15.05, Public Safety Impact Fees of the Fountain Municipal Code. Mr. Gates?
There we go. Good evening, councilmembers and Madam Mayor. Presenting the first reading of ordinance 1787 and ordinance amending the chapter 15.05 of Public Safety Impact Fees of the Municipal Code, we were just, we need to pull out the actual fees that were in the ordinance when we see a change in the, the actual impact fees themselves, which should be presented as a resolution. So my proposal is move them completely out of the, the actual ordinance. Do you have any questions for me?
If you're removing them completely, where are they going to?
They're going to be just adopted by resolution, and then they'll show up in the fee schedule at a later time.
Okay, all right, so it's not like, so if somebody looks at this and says, oh my gosh, they're completely removing all the impact fees for new building, that's not what's happening. You're just, you're just doing it differently.
Yep, and I will be presenting the resolution on the second reading of this ordinance.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? So any questions from anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing no questions, what would council like to do? Councilmember Rick?
Move to approve ordinance 1787 on first reading.
Councilmember Duncan?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on ordinance 1787. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. That takes us on to item nine, C, Resolution 23-020, a resolution amending Exhibit F of Resolution 22-023 for costs incurred in the administration and processing of licenses, fees, service charges, applications, permits, vehicle inspection fees, and other fees and charges, and authorizing the waiver or redistribution of certain fees or charges. Mr. Gates?
Makes it easy when it's back-to-back like that. So this one is just going to represent a, we're, we're trying to match our regional partners and neighboring agencies on our, our actual fee schedule for the fire department to include plan reviews and operational permits. Like I said, we're just matching regional partners across the, the county and even the state. If you have any questions, please ask.
Okay, so the only changes are, in this are things that are redlined, is that correct? And some of these fees are brand-new. Okay, all righty. So I'm sure everybody had a chance to look them over, and Councilmember Rick, do you have a question for Mr. Gates?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
So we've taken them out of Chapter 15.05. Where can somebody go online to find these fees now that we're putting them in a resolution?
So just a quick, quick correction on that one. This is actually the fee schedule. That was the ordinance for the impact fees, a separate discussion on that one. This is going to be in the fee schedule, which is accessible through the city clerk, also on the website, and to include on the Fountain, the fire department's website, Ax has it too.
Okay, so Fountain Fire Department website and city clerk's website, if somebody wants to log in, they'll be able to find them. Okay, that's all I had, Madam Mayor.
And do you know when those would be available online?
As soon as you give me the, we're good to go, I can put them on tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm hoping some business owners have looked these over because there are quite a few fees. Can you please take a minute and please explain a proposed, what is the difference between a proposed fee and an updated fee?
The proposed fee and updated fee?
I'm sorry, let me, let me rephrase my question. I'm looking at the redlined section, and I don't have page numbers, I'm sorry, where it says the fee, and then it says proposed and updated annual operation permit renewal, reissue initial. Can you, can you kind of just explain that really quickly?
Yes, yes, I know what you're, and that's going to be close to the back, backside of the, the document here. Proposed fee, and you got your initial fee, that's going to be for operational permits if a new business is coming in. We have to do a lot more research on certain topics, i.e. it's amusement building, when you're talking about a haunted house going into place. We have to do a lot more work and research study on it, so we have to actually get additional documentation, publications, and more code study just to be able to do the plan review on that, and also the inspections. So the initial would be 495, 494, just to do the overall review of it, the inspections, the walkthroughs, the emergency plans and everything. Now, if it's a renewal, if they want to keep going after 90 days or 180 days, however long that permit is good for, then they would actually pay 164, where we would go out there, main, do another site visit to ensure that everything is still in a proper operating order and there's no life safety risk.
Okay, so some of these others, for example, on the very last page, propane tanks and cylinders say that a business would sell HP19. On the initial fee, that would be when they were just getting the cage and everything set up at their business, it'd be the 304, and then they have to pay and renewal or reissue every year of 175, or only if they make changes?
175 every year. We do have to inspect those every year, and once again, we pull out the NFPA code for liquid petroleum gas products, and we have to do study prior to showing up on site. So it's just compensating the city for us having to do the extra code work and studies to do the, do that.
No, I just, I want to make sure everybody understands exactly what we're looking for, because on, I don't sell these anymore, but I know there's very little markup in those tanks. I mean, it's like a couple of dollars. So if you're only selling a couple a month, I think you're probably going to see some people drop out of selling those, because honestly, that fee isn't going to make it worth their time. And, and those are usually a loss leader for businesses to try to get you to come into, to, to do something else. So-
And, and these ones are for your, your cages and your 125 gallons plus. Most of the, the small ones are your 20-pounders, and they should not be affected by this.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you for the clarification. Yeah, it's really, really hard, and there's very little markup on something. I do want to make it clear, I did review these fees with them ahead of time and ask questions. There is one that directly does affect my business. When that fee came up, I, what I said to you and Chief Heber and Chief Graham, I'm not touching that one, don't look at it, do your own thing. I don't even want to see it till it comes before the council. So complete removal of that one and whatever it is, whatever it lands at is what is paid. So I want everybody, I just wanted to disclose that, so that nobody comes back and says, I tried to manipulate something when I, I took that paper and said, don't show me what you're doing. Chief Graham, do you agree with that? Do you agree with that?
And I do want to point out there, this is, the initial fees are waived for current businesses, period. We don't feel like we shouldn't do that. We've already been working with these business owners. It would be, we would look at doing the renewal fees and the reinstatement fees, reissue fees, because it does take a little bit of extra work for us to do that.
Right.
For any new businesses come in, yes. If it hits one of these operational permit requirements, then yes, we would actually utilize this.
Thank you for making that clear. Okay. So any questions from any other council members? Is there anyone, I see Mr. Linder standing back there. Okay. Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Alan DeRere Road. Two comments. Number one, gentleman standing here speaking, can't hear a freaking thing back there.
Okay.
Can you remind everybody to speak up a little bit, because I thought we had better voice hearing stuff in this room?
IT, is there a way to, I noticed Sylvia's mic is kind of low tonight, too. Is there any way we can kind of turn those up a little bit? Nobody complains about hearing me, I guess that's good.
I mean, you know, you go like this, and it talks a little bit louder back there, but whatever.
Okay.
Second thing, whatever this gentleman's talking about, I don't have a clue what it is. I'd like to probably have seen a couple things on the screen about fees. I, this is all brand-new to me about impact fees and so forth, and you, you give us a piece of paper today with nothing on it. I'd like to see something instead of hearing half of the things the man says, because I can't hear it.
And Madam Clerk, just to verify, this, the council packet is put online-
That's correct.
-on Fridays?
That's correct.
The weekend before, and so everything's available?
Yes, ma'am.
To review it online. Okay, so that is a possibility for people to see it. Was there one in particular that you had a question about?
No, ma'am, I'm just new to this tonight.
Okay.
Trying to learn.
We all are. Okay, all righty. So do you have it on a slide that we could pull up, or, and I know IT is looking at the mics right now?
I do not, ma'am.
You do not? Okay, all righty. If, if you have something to say, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Sandra Black is my name. I would just like to know how to navigate the website, so I can look at whatever is proposed, because on the, where would I find the proposal?
Right now, you would find it under the City Council Pa, Packet, under the City Council Meeting?
Would that be under the City of Fountain?
Go to City of Fountain, correct.
I'm there.
Okay, and then would they just click on?
And then the tab under Governments?
I'm there.
City Council?
I'm there.
From that point, there's city council agendas on the left and recordings.
No, I don't see any thing there.
It's actually on the left side of my screen for city council agendas and recordings.
Okay.
The very first file is twenty twenty-three council agendas. You actually have to go to the very last one on there, as they're done by date. The most recent is actually at the bottom, four twenty-five.
Sometimes on the, sometimes on the phone, it's a little bit different. You got it?
Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Please come back and, and state your name again so that, for the recording.
Al Lender, REA Road. Like I says, I'm kind of new to this too, you know, and phone numbers?
Excuse me, Mr. Linder, could you please step away from the podium and step back to the microphone? Mr. Linder, I'm asking you to step back from the podium and back to the microphone, please.
Never mind, I don't need it, thank you, very kind of saying. Never mind, I don't need to talk to you.
Okay, well, you're welcome to come, it's just.
Never mind.
All right, is there anyone else from the audience who would like to speak and say anything to the fees?
I do have.
Okay, if you'd like to come up to the microphone, please, and state your name for the record.
My name's Fran Carrick, and I live on Chumway Road. So you, the council receives this volume of information on Friday night, and you're prepared to address it with public Tuesday afternoon, is that correct? And I just want to be clear that these fees are just for the fire department? That, that you're, that you're addressing?
They go to the city, they actually go back to the city, you don't actually see them. The city's being compensated.
Mr. Gates, could you please come up to the microphone for your answer, please?
I speak too quietly, apologize. The fees actually go right back to the general fund of the city, just to compensate. So when we do budgets every year, I can justify my needing to purchase additional publications and code books. So we don't get the money.
No.
It goes back to the city.
Goes to the general fund, okay, okay, that's good. And we can see the fees online?
Yes. Well, under the city council packet for now, yes. Yeah, which is put online every Friday.
But you have a spot where we can go and then look at?
Ma'am, if you have a comment, I need you to come at the microphone so everybody can hear it and it can get recorded, because I'm sure we have some people online.
I'm sure. So there is a place in the City of Fountain website where we can look at all the fees that are being charged by the different entities, departments, and see what those fees are. Is that correct?
I'm going to let the clerk answer that question, please.
Sorry. Currently, our fee schedule, oh, we got it turned up. Currently, our fee schedule is available online. It's broken down by different departments. However, the, sorry, Fran. The utility fees are spread out differently, so they're done in a different document, which is also available online.
Okay, so these are separate from the utility fees, of course? Okay, got it.
These fees being proposed obviously would not be there yet. They would be in the city council packet, right? Okay?
And we do have a section just on the Fountain Fire Department's website that's under the City of Fountain website. That does have our section pulled out directly, but it is in the city clerk page, on the government page, and also on the Fountain Fire Department page.
Okay, are there any further questions from anyone in the audience? Please come down to the microphone and state your name. Just, the reason we have you state your name every time is because if somebody's listening to the audio recording, they won't, you know, be able to necessarily know who it is, so.
I perfectly understand. My name is Sandra Black. I see, I found the agenda, and there are over thirty-six pages that you would like us to review in the span of a weekend. Is that the way it works? Is there any way we could get more time? You know, make this proposal a little bit earlier so people actually have time to look it over, because we all have jobs.
Well, it was posted on Friday, and I, council, as part of our job is, during the weekend, we made a commitment to review the agenda packet and come prepared to the meetings. So we will see what the council wants to do with this. Councilmember, excuse me, I'll get you in a second.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Rick?
Question for Marshall Gates. What's it going to do if we postpone or table this motion to give the public more time to read it and give us some feedback?
Councilman Rick, I think the only response to that would be probably in relation to some of the work that we have coming up with PPIR. We were hoping to get this in place prior to the kickoff season with PPIR. I mean, the impact will be what it is until this is in place. We won't be charging our current cost with our personnel cost down at PPIR. We've made this new fee schedule reflect the changes that have taken place to the pay scales in the last six months, and so that would be the impact from our perspective.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, any further questions from anyone in the audience? Okay, is there any further questions from council? Seeing none, what would council like to do? Councilmember Applegate?
Move to approve resolution, Resolution twenty-three dash zero two zero.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Councilmember Estes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from council? Okay, seeing none, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried. All right, that takes us on to item nine D, community discussion regarding a possible ballot initiative of joining the Pike's Peak Rural Transportation Authority. And I'm not sure who's, is it Mr. Evans or Mr., okay, Mr. Johnson?
Maybe if you don't mind me getting started. How far back should I stand? A whisper, just like Gates.
We have extra guests in the audience, I guess, huh?
I might be a little bit louder than Mr. Gates. So I just wanted to kick us off here and, and talk a little bit about the purpose of tonight's discussion, which is, is to do just that, just to discuss this potential issue. Because action will need, if brought forward, will be, will need to be taken by the voters. Eventually, if, if the council decides to move forward with this, we'll take a resolution to approve language to put it on the ballot. And that's, that's kind of, got a specific timeframe associated with it. And so this is just a reminder to you all and to the public, which is, no real formal action should take place tonight. No formal action should take place because, because of those timelines, we're not certifying any language, we're not making any decisions. It's really just hearing and discussing, especially with a topic as complex as this one, it's really just taking the time to introduce the topic and to have that discussion. So I just wanted to kind of remind us all of that before we jump into the substance. So with that, I'll kick it to Todd, who's going to get us going here with the substance.
Thank you, Troy. I'm going to try this while we've got Chris over there, and we're going to see. I'll be turning it over to Bob as well. So Chris, so far, so good. So just primarily to let the, the members of the public.
Excuse me, just, can you guys in the audience hear Todd, okay?
Can you hear me, okay?
Okay.
I'll go into command voice. If you need it, just give me one of those, and I'll, I'll give you. So just to let everybody know kind of where we're at with the discussion in joining the PPRTA itself. This conversation has actually, we've been having this conversation with council and with several members of the public and our roadway focus group for several years. We actually started that discussion back prior to the last ballot initiative in twenty nineteen for our roads of what are the options that are out there? What, what do we have option-wise to look at fixing our roads? So after we had those initial discussions, it was initially decided that we would attempt, as a city, we would attempt our own initiative. And that was attempted again back twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. That went in front of the voters. That did not pass, that wasn't successful. So the voters asked us and the folks that we have discussions with to go back and look at other options. And again, we land on the Pike's Peak Rural Transportation Authority program. This program has shown to be successful in the region itself. The reason that Fountain did not join back when the PPRTA, PPRTA originally was approved by the county itself was the formula or how the money was dispersed to the different municipalities was different than it currently is. Then it didn't have a population mechanism so that you got the money, the funding back based off of your population. So our council at the time felt that we would not join at that time, and they decided to do an initiative called Moving Fountain Forward. That initiative did pass, and we have been moving forward with, with completing those projects. All of those projects have not been completed. One of the issues with those was it was a certain amount of money going to projects whose estimates have now increased three and fourfold on building those projects. And in that initial Moving Fountain Forward language, the city could not bond or borrow to get the funding to complete them. Now, we're talking about fourteen years ago, thirteen years ago. So therefore, we were dependent on the money coming in and then expending it. But the problem is, is the money was coming in, the cost of these projects have gone up exponentially. We're just ready to start the Indiana project, which is part of Moving Fountain Forward, and the initial estimates on that were anywhere between seven hundred and fifty thousand to one and a half million. We will now pay, we hope, because we were moving forward with the bid process, in excess of five million dollars for that same project. So that's how much the costs of these have gone up in, in those fourteen years since Moving Fountain Forward was passed. Nobody could have saw that back then. We were in the middle of a recession when Moving Fountain Forward was passed. That's not anybody's fault. Nobody could, could have seen, none of us could have predicted that that would occur. So as we've moved forward and we're looking at different options, the PPRTA changed their language, and they changed those rules in what they call PPRTA two. Then they went to a new formula which said the money that is returned to the municipalities is based off the population. So that was the big concern initially, and that has been removed. And since then, you've seen multiple other smaller municipalities join PPRTA, and you've seen a lot of successful projects that have been funded through PPRTA. Now, part of PPRTA, and that we will have to do ourselves, is the public approves the specific projects, the capital projects, that are built in our city if we ultimately join. So that's capital that, right now, we don't have coming from anywhere else. Bob McDonald is going to give a presentation and give everybody a current look at exactly where we stand right now on our money that comes in for our roads, what it's spent on. He's going to show everyone here shortly on the condition of our roads. So as we move forward with that discussion, last year, this was discussed multiple times through workshops and through different city council meetings, because the discussion was, we really have two large needs in the city. One was public safety, and the other is the condition of our roads. Well, at the time, it was decided that it would be prioritized with the public safety initiative last year, which was a mill levy. This is a sales tax. So two different types of funding, and the public safety gratefully passed. So that's moving forward, and those, that funding will be coming in. Mr. Cristiani will tell us about how, how he's going to kick off, and the PD is going to kick off hiring those extra bodies when that funding is sufficient. So now, we're back to address again, when and if we move forward with a PPRTA initiative to the ballot. So that's been discussed all the way back at our budget meetings, again, at our council workshops, at council meetings. But we wanted to make sure that we had one additional attempt to sit down with the public and get the community's feedback on this. So Troy had mentioned tonight, there will be no action, no formal action taken on this. But on the timeline, our next deadline is May ninth. We will need to come to a decision on if we forward a letter of intent to join PPRTA to the PPRTA board. So I would ask that on May ninth, the council does make that decision if we will move forward with a letter of intent. Now, that's not, again, going to be a resolution, that's nothing that locks us into that vote. But the PPRTA board has a timeline that they need to meet as well, so they need to be notified. So this is just another one of those steps, but we wanted to have just a very town council type of a discussion where everybody has an opportunity for feedback, question and answer. We've got three representatives from PPRTA and the PPACG here tonight to answer any specific questions that we can't answer. So we've got some maps. So we've hopefully, proactively are able to answer any of your questions with the experts that we've got here tonight. And I'm going to turn it over to Bob McDonald, who's going to give us a, a short summary on exactly where we stand with our streets. For those of you that don't know, we did do a second survey. We did one last year, and we just completed a survey and presented that to city council last council meeting. And that went out to four hundred residents of Fountain. And if you haven't seen those results, ma'am, you can also find those on our website and take a look at what the community said in large numbers on if they support putting this on the ballot. So we'll all be available, and Mr. McDonald, I'm going to turn the floor over to you. Okay? First, Bob McDonald, Transportation Director for the City of Fountain. I'm not sure, do you want me to stand up and address? I can move around, I just want to make sure the mic gets everything, so.
Yeah, I need you to stay at the mic so that it gets recorded well, yeah.
Okay, thanks for everybody coming today, I did show up. What I wanted to do today is just kind of go through and give just a very quick, I don't want to take too much of your time, but kind of give a quick state of the city address as to where we stand with funding and where the streets are right now. The one thing that I'm excited about is over the past year, we were able to fund a pavement management survey. So we had an outside organization come in and do a comprehensive study of all our infrastructure. So every city street that is paved was studied. We had everything from ground penetrator, penetrating radar, falling weight deflectometers, a lot of scientific-type comprehensive studies were done, not just what the surface of the roads look like, but what is happening underneath the roads that caused some of the distresses that everybody in this room has to endure as they drive around our city right now. So that was something that we thought that was very important for the city going forward. As we look for and ask for funding in the future on what is needed in this city, it is important to know what the current infrastructure looks like and what we need and what will we need to do to fix what's on top of the roads and what's underneath the roads. So we can go to the next slide, please. So since I took this position back in two thousand and seventeen, one of the primary, I was, I've been working on a lot of things. A lot of the, one of the primary things that I've been working on is staffing, which is not really part of the PPRTA, but I did want to bring this up a little bit on where we sat. I wanted to go back, and I look back at history a little bit. In two thousand and eight, the city streets department was authorized eight full-time and four seasonal employees. In two thousand and seventeen, I had six full-time and two part-time employees. In, in two thousand and eighteen, that increased to eight full-time employees. We transitioned a couple of part-time into full-time. And now, in two thousand and ten, city council has, has blessedfully, and thank you so much for increasing our manning where we are now. But you can see, over the past twenty-three years, how many employees have I increased with the infrastructure growth of this city? Very few, about one, in reality, over the last, over those years. So we are definitely still short with what we need to, to take care of the infrastructure that we have. Funding-wise, one of the studies that happen statewide every year is Kappa, which is the Colorado Asphalt Pavement Association. They conduct a survey every year of any agency and every, any municipality or county government that will, that will give information to that survey. In two thousand and seventeen, sixty-seven local agencies statewide in Colorado submitted data to that survey. Fountain ranked sixty-four out of sixty-seven in funding per lane mile of their roadways. Okay, so we were pretty low on the barrel on how we fund our streets. In two thousand and twenty-two, out of ninety-eight agencies that are currently being surveyed, we ranked ninety-three. So we are still very low. Part of the thing that we have really shifted our focus on is one thing that I really noticed when I, when I came in, is we were doing a lot of work, but we weren't doing a lot of preservation. Okay, we weren't taking care of the streets that, that needed to be taken care of. The one big thing, and I kind of relate it, kind of like.
Uh, the one big thing, and I kind of relate it kind of like a dentist's visit. You can wait over the years, you can either get your teeth cleaned every year and make sure your teeth are healthy, or you can wait and you can pay $50 or $80, uh, to get your teeth cleaned every year, or you can wait for six or seven root canals to happen and you could pay thousands of dollars. That's really kind of the same condition as, as, and how we should address our roadways. For just a few dollars every year, if those, if that funding is available, you can extend the life of your roadway, uh, pretty dramatically. If we do a road and we build a road correctly, uh, the way it should be built, base, subgrade asphalt, proper asphalt done correctly, a roadway should last about 20 years or so. Okay, and you can extend that roadway, uh, by a lot of years if you conduct some preservation treatments, whether it's crack seal, uh, a chip seal every few years to protect the surface of that road. If you don't do that and that road starts to degrade over a time period, at a certain point, you get to the path, you get to the point where you can no longer preserve that roadway. We can go out there and even a roadway like, uh, Cross Creek, which is one of our bad roadways. It's almost a six-lane wide roadway in our city. It is a massive chunk of asphalt for this city. Okay, we don't have the money to fix that roadway. That was one of those roadways that has very little base underneath it. It was not, it was not built very well and it is falling apart now. I get so many complaints on that roadway, why aren't you repaving it? Why don't you repave it? If I repave it, I'm wasting your money. Because in two years, because of all the clay underneath that roadway, that roadway will look the same way it does right now. The only thing I can do for that roadway is I can wait for the funding to come in and I tear it out and I rebuild it from the base up the way it should have been done in the first place. Okay, and that is a lot of money for this city. A road, a road like Cross Creek with the square yards of asphalt on that roadway is probably about a four or five million dollar roadway to rebuild properly. Money that of course we don't have. My current funding for the, for, uh, the City of Fountain for resurfacing is about $700,000 a year. Okay, and that's for the entire city. I've got to spread that money out of the entire city on where I think it needs to go. Uh, and where we need to preserve, try to preserve the roadways that we can with the money that we have. Um, next slide, please.
Bob, could you go back and explain what, uh, Kappa is for everybody?
Yes, I think, uh, it's Colorado Asphalt Pavement Association. They are kind of a, a nonprofit association. They're out of Denver. Uh, but they assist us, uh, a lot and they assist any agencies that is a member of them. They conduct free training. They do a lot of these type of surveys statewide. Uh, they help promote asphalt, of course, because that's what they're in the business to do. Uh, but they do a lot of, uh, scientific studies. They conduct schools for, for local agencies, a lot of time free of charge or at very low cost to help educate and get people smart on asphalt, on how it should be built, the best practices. They call, they take all the information from what is now those 98 agencies that are members of Kappa. Uh, they take all of that information and try to make best, and develop best practices on how to build a rock, a road and make it last for the longest period possible. As I spoke about earlier, the pavement management survey results. Uh, we are working on these results now as these numbers are coming in. Uh, but with, uh, and, and this is one of those numbers that the, that Kappa gathers from all the municipal agencies that go in, any type of government that is part of that. Uh, our overall rating from our pavement management survey right now is about a 34.6. So you can see where that falls, uh, in the red, orange, yellow, green. We are in a, in a poor rating overall. Okay, for the city. If you look at a state average, the state average for their PQI or their pavement quality index is about a 69 is the state average. Um, the higher 75th percentile is a 78 and a 25th percentile is about a 61. And we're at a 34. Okay, so after talking with engineers and other reps from Kappa, we are definitely at the lower, lower end of that totem pole with the condition of our roadways. If you look at the breakdown of the numbers, I think we are doing some good things in Fountain with the funding that we have. Uh, one of my primary, uh, responsibilities, of course, is to keep the main roads drivable. So the emergency services and other emergency vehicles can get to where they go. So the money, most of the money that we spend, and I get a lot of questions on that, or why are we always working on our arterials, our major roadways? Because that's all I can afford to do. Those roadways are roadways that if I do do a two-inch mill and overlay on them, it works. It lasts for, and I can get another 10 years or 15 years out of that roadway by milling the surface off, getting a new layer of asphalt on it, it'll give us some life. Again, if I mill and overlay a roadway like Cross Creek, I'm just wasting your money because it's just going to fall apart. Subsurface wise and structure wise, it's just not built anymore to be able to take and, and, and get a good bang for your buck out of that money that we use. So you can see arterial wise, we actually rate a 61.9 PQI, which is a pretty good number. It's an affair number. It's kind of our, it's for the City of Fountain, that's, those are our best roadways. Our collectors sit at about a 41.2. And our residential, of course, which make up 70% of the city's roadways are our worst roadways. They sit at a 25.3, which is really just above mostly failed roadways. So we're, we're definitely, our, our residential streets are our worst streets by far. Next slide. Oh, question?
Bill, we'll have questions at the end of his presentation. If everybody could just please hold him.
So I wanted to give this, this is just kind of a beef, a brief overview, a quick picture, snapshot of our city, uh, with our PQIs. Uh, so you can kind of see how it falls out there from good to failed roadways. You can see where a lot of our, our collector streets and our res, and our residential collectors, minor arterials are in pretty good shape. And you can see the Cross Creeks especially, the Heritage neighborhoods, even up into the Thumb area, up off Fountain Mesa, uh, down in Little Ranches where a lot of those roadways are just in a failed, failed condition. And that's, the, the numbers and the studies are pretty much accurate with what we have been saying. Next slide. So I wanted to throw some budget scenarios together for you just to kind of show what our budget does for us right now. And based on, of course, just rough estimations on what PPRTA would bring in, on what it would do for us in the future if we were able to, to get, uh, some of those monies. So right now, uh, green, that green line at the bottom is the $700,000 a year budget, which is pretty much where I sit right now with what I can utilize to fix our roadways. With our current PQI of about a 34.6, that's with this money being spent this year. The 700, $700,000 that I spend this year, at the end of this year, our PQI will continue to drop. So by the end of this year, the beginning of next year, right now I'm at a 37. Beginning of next year, I'll be at a 34. Okay, and those numbers will continue to drop over the next 10 years. This is a 10-year forecast on that we put out there. At the end of 10 years, with that $700,000 a year budget, we will be at about a 17.8. Okay, which will be, we'll have a lot of dirt roads again in the City of Fountain. Okay, a lot of the roads that, that I grade out there for you, uh, they'll be much more, much more prolific, prolific throughout the city. Uh, because a lot of the roads, like the Cross Creeks and some of the other residential roads, I'll have no choice but to mill them up and turn them back to dirt roads. Another line in there, just a blue line, which is a $3 million line. That $3 million line budget per year is what it would take right now, not for us to fix anything, but us, for us to maintain that pavement quality index of about a 34. You can see per year, if I spend about $3 million a year, 2023, at the end, we'll, we'll jump up our PQI to about a 39 or 40. And at the end of 10 years, we'll be at a 39.8. So $3 million a year will not do much for us. If we were able to, uh, to utilize monies from PPRTA, I estimated basically a first year, and this also includes the monies that I do get from Moving Fountain Forward. Okay, so those are included in these numbers. Uh, at the end of two years, the two years for 24 and 25, and again, these are just projections on what would happen if we got those, if we got that money next year. Uh, we could push that out a year or whatever that looked like based on the recommendations. At the end of those two years, you can see the orange line kind of in the center. It slowly goes up over the first two years. And then at the end of the first two years, once we start getting the full money that we could get from PPRTA, you can see at the end of 10 years, our PQI or quality index, we could actually get it up to about a 48. So that is, that is kind of the state of the union, uh, for the City of Fountain with the funding that we currently have and what we would need for this city to really get these roads and start seeing it's an improvement. Start seeing where I could get into the Cross Creek neighborhoods, the, the Heritage neighborhoods, the Little Ranches. And again, can we fix every road in the city with PPRTA money? I will tell you right now, we cannot. It is not going to be, every road in the City of Fountain is going to be fixed next year. Uh, we would get in those neighborhoods though. We would fix the major, the, the community collectors, the Legend Oaks, the big roadways in those neighborhoods, and within we would start working our way out. Uh, but it is, uh, it is the only, the only light at the, at the tunnel that I see right now, uh, based on funding. Um, other than that, I just see a train coming the other way. Next, I think that's the last slide. Any questions?
Okay, we're going to open up to questions from council first and then we'll go out to the, um, members, the audience and anyone online.
Absolutely.
Okay, Councilmember Rick?
Thank you, sir, for your presentation. Um, you used a couple of terms I'm not sure everybody in the audience understands. Uh, arterial, collector and residential.
You bet.
Arterial, obviously, uh, like Jimmy Camp, Ohio Fountain Mesa, would that be correct?
That would be correct. Mark Shuffle, CNS Road are some of the large, the larger roadways in the city.
And then residential is the roads, the streets our houses are on?
Correct.
Can you give us some examples of collectors?
The collectors are, the residential collectors are like CNS. Parts of CNS would be a residential collector. Um, Ancestra going through Heritage would be a residential collector. Legend Oak coming up through Cross Creek would be a residential correct collector. Uh, Progress would be a good residential collector. So kind of the roads that collect the houses. Do you have another example?
Link Road?
Link Road, Link Road would be an arterial. Yeah, Link Road would be an arterial for the city. So yeah, so the residential collectors would be the main thoroughfares that, that bring that local neighborhood traffic out onto a arterial roadway.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's all I had, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Good clarification. Uh, I'm not sure who was next. Okay, Councilmember Estes?
Yeah, um, Bob, can you go over how much of the tax money is collected up by Sams for PPRTA that Fountain does not receive?
I do not have the specific numbers. Uh, I don't, do you have them?
Yeah, um, I can't break it down to Sam's Club specifically, um, Miss Estes, but in general, those, that is one area of the City of Fountain that is currently in PPRTA. And of the areas that we have, um, our finance department estimated about 1.2 million. The majority of that is going to be coming from South Katomi Islands.
Yeah, so that's money that already is in City of Fountain that's collecting and we don't get any benefit of it.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, and everyone needs to, uh, to remember, it's not just that area. It's any money that the citizens of Fountain go and spend in Whitefield Security, um, at the different shops, restaurants there. It's anything that you go up into Colorado Springs. Um, everywhere basically that you go spend in the county or Colorado Springs, you are paying that 1% PPRTA, but none of that is coming back to the City Fountain at this point.
Councilmember Duncan?
So the, the residential areas where the builders came in and the roads were done incorrectly. Um, is there, is there any liability on their part?
You know, we've looked at that several times based on the age of the roadways, you know, and there were some different methods that were done back in the day. A lot of what we call full-depth asphalt, um, where, and that's, we run into a lot of those roadways where the roads are falling apart and the majority of my crews now, we spend the majority of our time, uh, digging out those failed areas to try to keep those residential, residential areas in good shape. What we find a lot of, and when I talk about full-depth paving, it is basically instead of treating the, uh, the subgrade material, what's underneath that roadway, and making it a good, a good foundation for the street, what they did is they said, well, Cross Creek neighborhood, it, we know it's all clay. Uh, so we don't want to overdig. We don't want to overdig three feet of clay, bring back in proper material and then build a roadway. So what we'll do is we'll just put, right here, it's really bad, so we'll put 14 inches of asphalt on there. And then here, it's not so bad, so we'll do eight inches of asphalt. And here, it's kind of good, so we'll put three inches of asphalt. And over here, we might have an inch of asphalt. So it just varies depending on the conditions of the soils. And region-wide, uh, anybody that I, that I talk to that does asphalt, we have absolutely abandoned that practice because it just, clay, uh, when you put a asphalt pavement on pure clay, it's just a matter of time before it turns into a roller coaster. You know, if you can't keep it absolutely dry and stable as it was set, as soon as you get a crack in the roadway and you get any water infiltration underneath that, that clay is going to start moving and expanding. And of course, the pavement on top of it is going to move and expand with it.
And I, and I want to make sure that everyone understands those standards that, uh, that were in place at the time, those weren't City of Fountain engineering standards. Bob mentioned it, those were regional and we followed Colorado Springs, uh, road specification standards. And Colorado Springs is having those same issues that we are. Hence the reason they've had to do their $50 million a year, different things to, to rebuild their roads. Um, because we accepted those as engineering practices across the region um, and have lived to regret those decisions.
And just to kind of expand on her question, roads come with a warranty period, right?
They do.
And, and so the warranty period would be way over for?
It is. That's, that's something else that I'm really, uh, fighting, uh, to expand that. Uh, it, it's still kind of boggles my mind that when a builder or an asphalt contractor comes in and builds a roadway that really has a design life of about 20 years, we only get a two-year warranty on it. Uh, to me, that's just a ripoff. Um, region-wide though, that is the, pretty much the standard. There are some times when we can get more, but it's very rare. So, yeah, it's usually a two-year warranty.
And during the, when people came down here and they built roadways and then they didn't come back and build the homes before, they were even starting to build the homes in some cases up in the Cross Creek area on the other side of Fountain or Mesa Ridge Parkway? Yeah, those, those warranties were over before they even built one house up there. So, it, yeah. Yeah, it's been, been an interesting education. Councilmember Hinton?
I don't have a question, more of a comment, and I appreciate your, your briefness from McDonald and well-informed. I just want to make sure that the public understands this is not, we don't, we're not trying to do scare tactics here. It's not gloom and doom. We just have to give you the facts. And this is the facts. Um, if we don't do something now, we will be riding on dirt roads. And I understand, um, it is a heavy ass if we go down this road to ask to, to a tax and a fee to come out of your pay because you, you're working hard for it. Um, but this is the reality. This is where we're at right now. Um, and I get it. Um, it keeps me up at night, you know? I think about this. I think about our, our citizens, what they have to give up and the sacrifice that they have to give up. And I understand that you might think this is big business or city coming once again to the well and ask for, ask for tax or a fee. Um, we don't do this lightly. We do this with a heavy heart if this is the route that we go down. And I understand that, that it could be difficult for, for some to, to, to say yes or to say no, but you vote your conscience, but you do it for the best of the city. Um, we all drive these roads and we all know the condition of these roads. It's not a secret. They're not good. They're, they're in really bad condition. And, and these go to your, your homes. You may sell them, um, and that could be between a person saying, yeah, they want your home because of the roads. Right? And that's not what the City of Fountain stands for. We should stand for the standard and having that standard. Right now, we're currently below standard. Um, if we keep going down this route, we're going to be way below standard. So I, I just want to express my comment and I understand that this is not an easy decision as we kind of move forward in this process. And we're really looking for the citizens to, to give us as much feedback as possible. As we did the survey, um, that was a great survey and we got a lot of feedback from that. But I, I do understand that this is a heavy ass if we do go down this road. And I, I appreciate your patience and working with the city and the staff. Uh, but just know that this is not something that we just decided just to do and do off of whim. We've been, we've been talking about this for years. Uh, we are at a point in a crossroad that we just have to make a decision. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Duncan?
I just want to make it clear, because you know I live on one of those major streets. And it, it, it has nothing to do with the warranty because even, you know, I understand the part and, and thank you Todd for your great answer because even the driveways, um, years later were sucking in. And, and I'm, and I mean inside the home. And even after they had filed bankruptcy, they still they had filed bankruptcy, they still were held liable. So that's why I asked that question. Some of the builders in my neighborhood left before all of the homes were even built. So I've been there since day one, so, you know, all the, all the information had been, and I was HOA president, metropolitan, so I know all the details.
You bet.
So I just wanted to ask that question, because we do still have citizens in my neighborhood wanting to know why they were not held liable.
Yeah.
It's very frustrating, very frustrating.
It is. And there are, there are a lot of other answers that I could give, part of that, why we would probably have a very, it'd be a, it'd be a hard road to fight for Troy, because there are a lot of other issues that they could come back and say, well, if you would have done this, your roads wouldn't be like that. If you would have done this, all the pavement, the pavement preservation that I spoke about, that we just really never had the personnel or the budget or the equipment to do, starting long before 2009, you know, sir, it, it, it's a fight that we would spend more money on than I think would be worth.
Right. So I just would, yeah, so I would just encourage all, any of the HOAs that are having this discussion still, you know, 20 years later, to contact the city.
Absolutely.
So that they, and, and contact you, your information, it's, your number is 719-322-2070. Bob McDonald, so give him a call.
The more calls that go to Bob, the better. That's the perfect number to use right there.
Bob, before we open it up, citizens, how will you, if this were to pass, how would you determine which roads, because everybody's going to be writing and calling you.
You bet.
I want my road, I want my road, my, my road's the worst, right? And I totally get it.
Absolutely.
You drive on it every day, and there are, but how, so can you explain the study and how that would?
You know, the pavement management survey would, would take a lot of the, what I would call inherent bias out of, I live on this roadway, I know it's in terrible shape, fix my roadway. Part of my job, of course, is to look at that 20,000-foot view and go, okay, I'm not respond, I'm responsible for all the infrastructure, not just the road, even the road I live on. So the pavement management survey takes that out of the equation, it looks at, it looks at not only the condition of the road, it looks at what's underneath the road, and then it estimates the cost of, here's what it's going to cost based on current values, and in this program, we can manipulate those costs, we can program inflation numbers into the cost, so every year, you know, this year, of course, we had, or last year, we had about a 2%, 2.5 to 3% inflation rate built in, way off base, right? So we had, we have to go in and adjust those type of numbers for these years, like we've been having now, where the inflation rates are so much higher than they have been in the past. But those, it, based on all that comprehensive information and that scientific data, it goes, based on the money you have, based on the budget that you have currently, this is your best bang, this is where you're going to get the most value for your dollar. We also take input from our roadway focus group. So as I look at all those numbers, and I look at that 20,000-foot view, I look at the input also that we get, what, get from our roadway focus group, and they, they bring me the concerns from the people that live in those zones that they live in. And as I look at that data, if those roadways are roadways, of course, that are plugged in to that, and they're all plugged in, but if it comes up as something that is in the near future, we can always bring that up as what we call a committed project, and we can, we can bring it higher on the list, if, if it's something that we think is worthwhile doing. And, and again, not just because of, of complaints, but based on the money that we currently have, it's going to make worthwhile to spend the money on that roadway, to fix it.
And, and how is the roadway focus group divided up?
It's, there's three zones, and there's usually, we have two reps from each zone in the city, and I don't have that map currently with me, but I think that map, we can get that map published.
That's online as well, that's.
It is online, yeah. So you can look at your zone, it also has the representatives from each of those zones, and the contact information, so you can always get in touch with those, with those representatives.
So, so they're there to represent their portion of town that they're getting comments from?
Absolutely.
So, so people aren't just saying one street, one part of town isn't, I'm sorry?
I'm still meeting.
Yes, they're still meeting, was her question?
Mm-hmm. We do, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so they, they represent their portions of town, and then, and then you guys discuss it, so it's not like everybody's in one end of town is getting more favor than the other.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay. All righty, are there any other questions from council? Before we take questions from the audience, did Mr. Sonnenberg, you're here from PPRTA, did you have anything you wanted to present tonight, or you're just here to answer questions if they go your way, or what would you like to do? You want to come on down? Okay. And if you could just state your name and?
Yes. Excuse me. Madam Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Rick Sonnenberg, I'm the program manager for the Pike's Peak RTA. The Pike's Peak RTA is just starting into its 19th year. It was approved by the voters in November of 2004, started January 1st, 2005, with four initial member governments, unincorporated El Paso County, the city of Colorado Springs, the town, uh, city, or, excuse me, the city of Manitou Springs, and the town of Green Mountain Falls, those are the original four. In 2008, the town of Rayma went to their voters, and the voters gave that a thumbs up, so Rayma joined effective January 1st, 2009. And then, a little over a year ago, the town of Calhan went to their voters, and in, at the end of '21, in November of 21, and their voters gave them a thumbs up to join effective in January of '22. The, I, I can give you more background, but I want, wanted to jump to the bottom line and to emphasize, and I have some handouts to hand your staff. The intergovernmental agreement, the IGA, between the six member governments, requires that all six governing bodies of those six member governments have to approve any new member. We strongly recommend that you get that thumbs up from the six members before you go to a ballot. In the odd chance that you didn't, you, you would not want that after you've gone to the expense of a campaign, and the expense and the time of a campaign. So we're recommending that you do that as soon as possible, and as Todd mentioned, I, I have a handout for him and your attorney. It's the sample resolution that Calhan sent to us when they wanted, when they were serious about joining, and then our board receives that, and then our board passes a resolution referring out to the six member governments, asking the six to take a month or two and get back to our board on the thumbs up of the new member government joining. So let me take a second hand, Todd. So that's the sample resolution from Calhan to our board, asking for our board to receive it, and then our board to pass a resolution referring out to the six member governments, asking them to give a thumbs up or thumbs down. We, we have informal, positive feedback from all six, but we need to do the formal. And I, we, again, recommend that you, if you're serious about joining, that you pass a resolution as soon as possible, no later than May 9th. Our board meeting on May 10 is when we hope to receive your resolution. Questions?
That's what Troy was returning, referring to, is the letter of intent. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm, there's, there's a few steps in our process, but that would be, that would be the first official one, is sending that resolution to the RTA.
Right, okay, thank you. All right, any questions from council so far? Okay.
I, I do have a fact sheet that I'll leave many copies for Todd to hand out as, as It explains the events that would, and issues that need to happen and be resolved in calendar 23, prior to your ballot, and then what would happen in '24. One of the highlights would be if, if your voters approved your ballot in November of '23, then you would effectively join January 1st of '24. For the budget year of '24, you would get maintenance only, but then in November of '24, the PPRTA would, would go to our voters, all of our voters, including your voters, and ask to add your capital projects. And, and for Mr. McDonald, I, I just wanted to share that we declare total reconstruction of a road to be capital. But you, you could use it as maintenance, but it, it's eligible for capital. And, and just to remind you that 55% of the money by the original ballot in 2004, 55% of the money is for capital construction, 35% for maintenance, and 10% goes to Mountain Metro for transit. Questions?
So far, you're sliding through, good, no questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? So you're, you guys are, and I wanted to introduce you, also, Mr. Gunning here, who is the director of Pike's Peak Area, Area Council of Governments, and RTA is, is under them, and then, I'm going blank, and your name?
Me?
Yeah.
I'm Karen Rowe.
Karen Rowe.
I used to be with Seed Island, now with the city.
Yeah, okay, so we have three members here that, that can answer lots of questions on that. So if we, we're going to go ahead and open it up to questions from the audience. I'll take two people that are in person, and then if we have any hands raised online, then we'll go to and take some, two questions offline, and we'll kind of go back and forth that way. So if you are in the audience, please, I saw Connie's hand first, so please come down and state your name and, and ask your question, and we'll see if, and whoever would be the best one to answer it. Okay.
Good evening. I have multiple questions. Would you prefer I ask one at a time? I only get two.
Two, please, two, and state your name for the record, please.
Connie Weisenhund.
And if you could ask two, and then give some other people some chances, and, and then if you aren't answered, you can come back.
So I guess my two would be, if there were a member of city council that ran on, that ran on roads and infrastructure as a part of their presentation for joining city council, have we returned back to them to see what their original ideas were, and if their input has a solution for our issue today? So that's one question. Does that make sense?
Sort of. I know there are lots of us who have talked about running for roads and infrastructure, and we've had work sessions to talk about how, what would be the best way to handle that, and this is, is what we all agree to, is to research this and see if this was a, one of the solution paths we wanted to go down.
Okay. And then the second solution that I had, or question I had, is a while back, we talked about the extra money coming from not being able to collect the fees for the bags, so eventually that would add up, right? And I'm thinking, is there a possibility we could make something happen with that?
The bag fee is very restrictive on how that was passed by the legislature, and what it has to be used for, and it cannot be used for roads.
But that, it's not being used for anything now, from the conversation we had a few months ago, because we didn't have anybody to go collect for it, correct? So it's just sitting there doing nothing?
No, we are not collecting it at all, and so we are not responsible for that money, and the state is actually thinking of passing a law to take care of that issue, so the money will not be available to be returned to anyone.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll be back if I'm able.
Okay. Ms. Chamina, I saw your hand.
Yes.
Please come down and state your name for the record.
Two questions.
Two questions, and then we'll go around again.
Two questions, oh my. Okay, so Sams is in the Fountain City limits.
Yes, but it was not, that property was not in the city limits when RTA was formed, it was in the county, and so it was voted into the RTA already before we annexed it into the city.
Oh, okay, that was one question. I guess my next one is, there was a?
And Penny, let me just expand on that also, that's any future annexations that we would do. If it's already in the PPRTA district, then it stays, then it stays in the PPRTA district.
Right. Gotcha. There was a blue line, I think, that was level, and an orange line that takes us up. What, what is that? What is the difference on that?
You bet. So those are three different budget scenarios that I put in there. The, the green line on the bottom is our current overlay budget for the City of Fountain, that's $700,000 a year.
But the blue line keeps us level.
The blue line?
The orange line takes us up. What is the, the orange line is if we go into PPRTA.
Correct. Based, based on estimations of funding that we might get from PPRTA, that is what, what we could do, some of the possibilities of what we could do with our infrastructure with that money.
And what's the blue line?
The blue line is if we get, I just add that in there as a, that, if we, if I had $3 million a year, that's, it, it would really do almost nothing. I just wanted to kind of say, a lot of people were like, well, you're getting $700,000 a year, why don't you fix our roads? And, and I, and I have a lot of these examples, of course, and, and please feel free to call me or come down, and we can definitely talk about those. But, you know, if you look at a road like Ancestra, I talk about Ancestra or Legend Oak, which goes through some of our, one, some of our residential neighborhoods, some of the more populous, either Cross Creek or Heritage neighborhoods. A road like Ancestra from Fountain Mesa all the way down to Legend Oak, that's about a $1.4 million road to rebuild. So that's, that's what I, I try to make sure I tell people, again, it's not just me skimming off a couple inches up top and putting asphalt on it, because that is one of those roads. Based on that other picture graph that kind of shows the infrastructure of the city, it is past that. We can't preserve that road anymore, we have to rebuild it.
Yeah, no, right, right.
Yeah.
My other is kind of a statement, can Colorado Springs do something similar? They've been doing this for 19 years, collecting the 1% tax, and show us what they have done with it, and how it has impacted Colorado Springs as far as their roads and that kind of thing.
Actually, I believe you have some booklets over there with RTA, what they've done? Did I see you walk in with those? Rick, do you have on the table? Do you have some books on the table that kind of explain what RTA's done? They put out a really, really good report, and if we don't have enough of those tonight, is that available on the RTA website?
Yep.
Okay. So that, that, what can, for the record, for those listening, can we, what is the RTA website?
Rick Sonnenberg, excuse me. Rick Sonnenberg, PPRTA, pprta.com.
Pprta.com, okay.
Can we get Calhan and Rayma also since they joined?
Okay, that, that report would be, everybody who's a member of it, working together, is in there.
Is in here.
It should be in there, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That, excuse me, that's last year's, the, the new one will come out in just a few weeks.
Okay.
That's '22, the, the one that's labeled 2023, but is for the 22 accomplishments, will, will come out in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
And then we'll be on the website.
So, check on the website, Penny, in a couple, three more weeks, there'll be the updated one for, for this most recent year, okay? All right.
At the PPRTA, we don't keep the, the kind of statistics that Mr. McDonald is, is keeping here. Maybe each of our six member governments might, particularly the, the larger ones, city and county might, but we, we haven't been charged or asked to, to generate a, a graph like this.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for bringing those tonight. Okay, do we have any hands raised online?
There's no hands raised online.
Okay, all right, we'll bring it back to the room then. Is there anybody who hasn't asked a question yet? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Mayor, and just so you and, and the folks here know, we do have some roadway focus group members online as well, if you'd like them, any questions from them?
Well, they just got to raise their hands, so, okay. Hi.
Hi, my name is Steve Arce, and so, for the record, I'm not entirely opposed to dirt roads, just so you know, but I realize that most people are not. And so, a couple of questions I have is, one is, will that process document that they gave us as far as the steps we would need to, to take, will that be made, be made available for the, to the public? And then, so the?
Mr. Evans, could you verbalize your?
Yes, we will, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then my next question being is, because I firmly believe overall in, in prevention, because I understand we, you know, maintenance, et cetera, but are there other things that we are looking at that we? we are looking at that we can include along with this? Not necessarily included as part of joining this, but included, and this can be for for anyone, and this could be as much, this could be everything from increasing public transit to traffic flow, to any of those, that would help decrease the stress on the roads so that you would have to repair them less. What are some of those things that we are looking at? Are there things that we are not implementing that we should?
You know, one of the biggest things that we have, and it's a great question and a great point. One of the problems that we have is there is different designs that we could do to improve our roadways. But one of the things that that folks forget is Fountain is primarily made up of a bunch of one to two-lane roads, they're originally county roads, that really haven't been improved with technology since then. So a lot of the different things, like we have done the the traffic signal at CNS and Fountain Mesa to improve the flow of that traffic, and we've gotten good feedback on that. We're looking at doing the same at Jimmy Camp in Ohio. But a lot of the things that that Bob really doesn't have an option to do is using new technology to improve traffic flow and to get things moving better, because we have no way to fund it. So it's kind of a chicken/egg, where there's a lot of things that have been thrown out there as concepts that we could do. But literally, when folks throw things out, my first answer is, how do we fund it? Because it's so expensive now to do anything that we 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 can't possibly take our funding that we have. The money that Bob talked about, it is earmarked because of moving Fountain forward. It has to be put to the resurfacing of roads. So we don't have the option of taking that funding, let's say for one year, not resurfacing any road and putting it to an intersection improvement, or traffic calming, or some of the other things in place, because we just don't have a funding mechanism for it. But we do get those concepts and ideas thrown at us. We just need to figure out a way, how do we utilize technology, which we hope the first step, as Bob showed on this, is to actually show folks there's some science to what we need to do to our roads, and it's not just staff's opinion of doing it. Bob, did you have any?
And one other great point that you brought up, a super point on that, is one thing that we did several years ago, one of the, one of the major things that are killing our residential streets are our trash trucks. All those trash trucks, if I put a scale on them, ninety-five percent of them will be overweight. They know it, they run overweight, and they are killing our streets. If you look at a road or a neighborhood, for instance, for example, even in Cross Creek, Heritage, any neighborhood in the city, if you stand out there on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, you probably have trash trucks running up and down your neighborhood every day of the week, because everybody, you know, you might have one trash company, somebody else has another one, and you might have six or seven trash trucks and trash services servicing your neighborhood. There are some neighborhoods in the city, newer neighborhoods, that have said, no, we're not doing that. So there is, you know, some of the ones with HOAs have said, no, one trash truck, one day per week, and that's it. That drastically cuts down on the amount of damage that happens to our roadways. I can show a ton of examples of of specific physical damage that are caused by these trash trucks. I've documented it. And we tried a few years ago now to say, we need to do, we need to try to do a single hauler for the city. There are cities throughout the country that have done that based on these same issues. How do we decrease the traffic that is causing the majority of the damage? If you look at ESOS and a lot of other members on how a passenger car affects a roadway compared to a to a bus or to a trash truck, it's just a, there's a drastic difference there. Unfortunately, we just did not get the public support to say we wanted to do that. People thought it was important that they had, they could choose whoever they want, which I think is very important to have that choice. But again, there's consequences that come with that. And when you have seven trash trucks running up and down your street, again, ninety percent of them overweight every day, they are destroying your roadway, and I can't do anything to stop it.
And just to, and Mr. Sonnenberg, you may have to rely on you on this question. Some of these dollars are going to be very specified in what we can use them for. For example, maintenance dollars. We can use them to repair a road. But if we, he wanted to do something like, like Mr., I didn't get, Arcey? Road capacity building, that wouldn't fall under the maintenance dollars. We'd have to go back and have a capital project put back on, and that would take a second ballot measure. Is that correct? At least close?
Rick Sonnenberg, again, I don't know what's going on with my throat here. So in, if you go to your voters in November of twenty-three, and their, your, your voters give you the thumbs up, and you're successful, and you join effective January first of twenty-four, you would get maintenance funds only in twenty-four. But then the PPRTA would go to all the voters in the PPRTA, including the city of Fountain voters that had just voted to join, and ask to add your capital projects. And that would be the PPRTA going to all the PPRTA voters in November of twenty-four. Then that would add your capital projects and capital funding starting January first of twenty-five. And that's when the PPRTA III that the voters in PPRTA have already approved, in in the six-member governments, they've already approved PPRTA III to start in January first of twenty-five. So if we go to our, to all of our voters again in November of twenty-four to add your projects, then you would get your projects and your fundings for capital as well as maintenance, starting January first of twenty-five. For the next ten years. Twenty-five through twenty-thirty-four. Did I answer your question?
And we have so many roads in town that we can't control. We have Highway eighty-five, Mesa Ridge Parkway, that are, that are CDOT roads.
Chris, bring up that map, would you?
Yeah.
The map, the color-coded map?
We can, we can never, as a city, directly do anything to increase the capacity on those roads. That would have to be a project that would go through PPACG, probably, for funding and CDOT and and all that, so.
I just realized I did not answer your question. Capacity expansion normally for us is capital. Putting an inch or two inches or one point seven five inches of asphalt on top is normally maintenance. Flurry seal, chip seal is normally maintenance. Curb gutter sidewalk, pad ramp replacement is normally maintenance. Traffic signal repair is maintenance. Sometimes traffic signal replacement can be capital. So there's, there's not a hard and fast rule between the definitions of maintenance and capital. There there is no codified or or in any legal document of ours, there's no definition of maintenance. So it, sometimes some of our member governments want to stretch the envelope, and then our citizens committee and and our board make a decision. But it's, for for most of the time, it's the standard maintenance items.
Okay, thank you very much.
And Mayor, as you brought up up here that we have on the map right now for everybody, the, what you see in green and then the blue, a lot of those are areas that we get complaints on, that they do lie within the city of Fountain, but we don't have any jurisdiction on those roads. We don't, excuse me, use any of our funding for those roads. We have no control over the number of vehicles that drive on those roads. Excuse me. So as an example, you see I-25, furthest to the left, Highway eighty-five, eighty-seven, and then another big one is Mesa Ridge. And we had CDOT, Jason Nelson came down and gave council a presentation on those roads a month or two ago, which was part of the education on this process. And their numbers show that the Mesa Ridge, coming off of Powers, of course, but Mesa Ridge, the numbers are going to jump dramatically in twenty years on that road. Same with Highway eighty-five, eighty-seven. So we continually get folks to say, hey, why doesn't the city and CDOT increase the size of Highway eighty-five, eighty-seven? And that just shows you, any region two monies that are going to go to those projects down here in Fountain are not only battled for on all three of those roadways, but then you've also got the Powers extension coming through as well, hopefully someday. So when you talk about all of those things, putting those together, and I've reminded everyone, the current project on on I-25, it's not going to add a lane each way. It's just rebuilding that road, because it needs to be rebuilt, and it's adding larger shoulders. So we're not getting any more, any more room to bring down any more cars on any of those, on any of those state highways in the near future. And we don't control the maintenance as you drive on. We get complaints constantly on the condition of Highway eighty-five, eighty-seven north of Mesa Ridge itself, and we have no ability to force CDOT and where they're going to spend their maintenance dollars. Hope that helps.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that's not asked a question yet that wants to ask a question? Okay, please come down and state your name.
Carrick, Schumway Road. One question I have is, you mentioned that up at Sam's Club, they're, they're already receiving money from that program, from Fountain, if, from Fountain?
So PPRTA is already collecting that sales tax up at the Sam's Club Vinatucci area, yes?
So and for for Fountain?
We don't get any of it.
Well, it's, it's annexed into Fountain, right? So do we have an escrow account with them?
It was not in the city of Fountain when RTA was formed. And if if it's, and it was in the county. So when it was voted on by the county people to join RTA, even if it annexes into any city, it still stays in that RTA. So with Fountain not being a part of it, those dollars just go to RTA, and and they've been spending them.
And what percent of tax raise are you going to ask for in your, if it's approved to go to vote?
It has to be one percent. And and that the only, that would not raise the sales tax at that areas that are already collecting it. It would only be the portions of the city that are not in it right now. So so at Sam's Club Walmart, it's not going to go up more. It's going to stay the same. It's just the rest of the city would would catch up with it.
And Floyd, so you're aware, and everyone else is aware, that the city legally challenged that-
No, the city did not.
Our ability, Walmart, excuse me, we're involved with that, with with Walmart. But that was legally challenged, and everyone, the courts found, that because it was already part of that district before it was annexed, then it stays in that district.
Okay, and then what is the proposed contribution annually that we will be making to this outfit?
So the numbers that our folks have come up with, and and Rick, I think your folks have have better numbers than probably our finance folks does. But it's based off of the annual tax, sales tax revenue that we receive. So this would be something that actually we would be putting in less. Our folks have determined, and I think PPRTA folks have confirmed, we will be putting in less than we would be receiving back because of the population formula that PPRTA now has.
Rick, did you want to come up and answer that also?
Rick Sonnenberg, PPRTA. In the financial calculation that we did about a year ago with the assistance of your city staff, our finance manager, Beverly at the time, she's now retired, estimated that it would be three million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand to the nearest thousand, three, three point seven five two, that that the city of Fountain would be contributing to the PPRTA. Three point seven five two. The maintenance, which would be the first year only, maintenance only, would be about two point two million. Then assuming all of the PPRTA voters approve your capital projects, then that would be an additional three point five million of capital. Three point five capital plus the two point two maintenance, and your contribution would be three point seven five two. Just amplify on what Todd said about the lawsuit where Walmart sued, of course, the PPRTA voters established the boundaries and the geography of the PPRTA in the November two thousand and four, effective January first, two thousand and five. So all of unincorporated El Paso County was in the PPRTA as of January first, two thousand and five. So then when Fountain annexed the the hilltop there at the northwest corner of I-25 and South Academy, Walmart sued the Department of Revenue and PPRTA to try to determine, get a court to determine that a non-member, at the time Fountain, could eliminate the taxing authority of the PPRTA on that ground. That went to all three levels of the state courts, including the Colorado Supreme Court, and it was determined that once it's in the PPRTA, and in this case, the member government of the PPRTA was unincorporated El Paso County, that a non-member by annexing could not eliminate the taxing authority of the PPRTA on that ground. And as Todd says, that that's true of any non-member annexations, Palmer Lake, Monument, Fountain, any of, any of those annexations after one-one oh five are still in the PPRTA taxing authority, per Colorado Supreme Court.
Did you have another question, Mr. Carrick?
Yes, let's see. What percent of the capital projects for any city or division or part of that are approved each year? What percentage requested are approved?
I think I can get that one for you, Rick, but help me if I don't, if I don't get it correctly. So when Rick mentioned the capital projects themselves, and Sylvia Huffman asked a great question on that same topic, that we'll give an example of what one of those capital projects would be. So what that is, is we come up with a list, along with our citizens and our council and our roadway focus group, of what we need for capital projects. So one of the things I would put on that list and as, would be to improve the intersection of Fountain Mesa and Ohio. Right, everybody knows how bad that is, right at the railroad tracks, right there? Well, that might be one of our capital projects. So then what we would do is we would put that on a list of capital projects that would go to the vote that Rick mentioned. And once those are approved, then those are the projects that we would utilize that funding for. So those would be, basically, we would make recommendations with the council, we would get the input from the public, we would all agree on what our ten capital projects would be for that ten-year period, to make sure we have enough funding to to build out those projects. Once they are approved by the voters, then that's specifically what we would spend that capital piece of money on to finish those projects.
How many a year would be approved, for example?
Well, we'd have to take that money that Rick talked about, and that would be our budget, right? So we would have to take the needs of our capital projects, we'd have to take the needs of our neighborhoods, we would have to take a look and prioritize what neighborhoods are in the worst shape, and then we would come up with a list of those capital projects based off of those needs, and those would be on our list that would be approved. And and as Rick mentioned earlier, that list is updated and approved every ten years.
And so we may not get one approved in a ten-year period? If it's, if it's over our budget?
No, as he talked about, it would be if if everything goes per the timeline, that that funding would start accruing, and we would start seeing maintenance piece, where we could start spending on our maintenance, the the two million plus that he talked about, then the capital projects would have to be approved. And, you know, the earliest we could, if we did a region-wide, would be starting in twenty-twenty-five, those capital projects would be completed in a ten-year timeframe. So, come on in, Rick.
I think Mr. Sonnenberg might be able to answer that. And I just want to let everybody in the audience know, as soon as Mr. Carrick is finished with this question, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Sure.
Because we, it's almost quarter to eight, and and then we'll come back and 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 continue with some questions.
Rick Sonnenberg, again, PPRTA. So we would estimate, as as all the member governments estimate, how much money you have to spend on capital for the ten years. The, I don't have my figures in front of me, but let's say it's three point five million a year, times ten, with inflation, call that forty million. So you have, you have forty million as a lump sum estimate of of what we expect to generate for you over the ten years. You would generate your capital list and have more, more than forty million, in case our revenue is better, you know, have fifty million dollars worth of capital projects on your list that we would take to all of our voters in November twenty-four to start on January first of twenty-five. Then each year, at budget time, you would prioritize, out of your list of fifty million dollar projects, how much you wanted to spend each year- projects, how much you wanted to spend each year for the three and a half million a year of the capital, present that to us. We have never, our board has never said no to the prioritization of our member governments of how they wanted to spend their capital money. So you would just prioritize your $50 million, and each year tick them off and bring them in, and we would approve it, and either start reimbursing you on your vendor expenses or paying your vendors with the invoices you sent us.
And just to give you an example, one of the projects that was put on the last RTA ballot was that roundabout that's set by Lowe's. And that's a county project done with some RTA funds, correct? And some CDOT funds, was that done? Because that was on the ballot measure. And I remember putting some pressure on Commissioner Lahino's to get that project finished. So, yeah.
How many, how many years had that project been on the hold, though, to wait to get to be approved?
It can only be on that 10-year plan. They have to get it done within that timeframe. So we're not going to promise you a project a year, because we might get two done in 10 years, depending on the cost of the project.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Or you might get, or you might get 10 done in 10 years. It just depends on the cost of the project that you, that-
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, Floyd, to give you an idea of our neighborhoods, to fix Cross Creek, to fix Heritage and things, we know we've got numbers on those, and those neighborhoods are going to be anywhere between six to 11 million, just for those neighborhoods. So it's going to be something where, you know, out of that 50 million pot that Rick talked about, it really will be key to prioritize that. But there won't be anybody that comes in and say, nope, those aren't your priorities, that can be decided within our city, which wasn't the way it was when Fountain originally didn't join. So it's, that's been improved, and we have confidence, because we've seen it work in the region for the last 19 years. So we have confidence it could work as us, for us as well. Sure, sure.
We're going to go ahead and take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll come back and see if we have some more questions. Do we have any hands online yet?
No hands online right now.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thanks for the question. You know, as Bob alluded to, in order for us to safely get to calls, the vehicles have to be operating when we get there. And, you know, luckily, we got the train tracks fixed when we did, so that was a big help. But traveling around these roads, especially the residential neighborhoods, is tough. There's some large cracks and holes, and it's not easy. And we have a difficult enough time keeping our vehicles maintained as it is with general maintenance. So, you know, new roadways, smoother roads for us would certainly increase our response times so we could get there faster than we could now. And again, the Highway 85s in Mesa Ridge, which are probably the best paved roads that we have. Aside from that, you know, Fountain Mesa, all of the major arteries are difficult for us to travel around in safely. So it would certainly help if we had better roads for the police cars and the ambulance fire trucks to get around in, for sure.
Yeah, and that's my point exactly. One thing leads to another, which causes more expense on something else. You know, we think the roads are not a major issue, but it is a major issue because it leads to something else in our police and fire, as far as their maintenance of vehicles and things of that nature. And it's your tax dollars, right? And we have to be good stewards of it, and we want to be good stewards of it, but we have to kind of fix things that need priority. And in my opinion, roads are one of those... And I got you, Mr. McDonald. Go right ahead, brother.
And just one thing to add to that. I have the privilege of also overseeing our fleet services for the city. So I directly see the suspension issues that we deal with. And especially, you know, when the officers and the fire trucks do have to run Code 3 to an incident, that is when we see the majority of the damage. You know, when you're traveling posted speed limits, I mean, there are definitely some roads in this city that I call them natural speed bumps. Because if you're driving more than 25 miles an hour down the road, you're probably going to be seeing a suspension specialist pretty quickly. So, you know, it's a double-edged sword, because I get the complaints too, that when we pave a roadway, now all of a sudden I get complaints saying, now they're speeding down the roadway. We need speed bumps. Well, I had speed bumps in there before, but you made me get rid of them. So it's a double-edged sword. But I see the suspension damage to these vehicles, especially to our heavy fire trucks. If you look at the weight of those trucks, when they hit some of those obstructions that are in some of our roadways, that what we get reports on, you know, that's where my crews focus on. So that's what we stay on. When we see that damage, we create those work orders, and we try to take care of the worst of the worst. So there is definitely an impact when we start repairing these heavy vehicles.
All right. Did we have anybody online?
Yes, we have one person online with their hand raised.
Okay. If the person online could unmute themselves, please, and state their name and ask their question. Can you please go ahead and unmute yourself and ask your question? Okay, we're going to go ahead with a couple of questions out of the audience, and we will come back and see if we can get that unmuted so they can ask. Ms. Carrick has not asked a question yet. Please come down and state your name.
My name's Frank Carrick. On Chumway Road. My mind is racing with this, and don't count this as a question, please. But what is the date that you guys are... Did you say May 3rd? You want to have something?
May 9th should be the evening that we wouldn't be voting on it to put on the ballot. We would just be saying to RTA, our intent is to look that way.
Okay. I would like to look through this book. I saw that Reema didn't do anything with the money.
They... When did Reema join?
Right. They're just new. Right.
Yeah.
And I want to talk to Reema in Green Mountain Falls and Manitou Springs. Because looking at this, of course, Colorado Springs is getting the majority of the monies, I assume, because of their population. Is that fair? Right.
Okay. Let the record reflect that Mr. Sonnenberg said yes.
Yes, and so did Todd. And so some of the things that I've heard... And secondly, I think we have, out of 35,000 people, citizens living in Fountain, we have six that are asking questions. It's usually the same six. And that makes me sad, because it looks like it's just the same six. But why is there a PPRTA? Why can't Fountain take care of their own money? Where did PPRTA come from 19 years ago? I have not had time to read this. This seems to me, my perception is, is that it's just another level of government. Why can't Fountain collect money from... Why is PPRTA getting that money from that Walmart up there and spending it our tax dollars in Colorado Springs? It's... What's that? Do you have an answer?
It's because Fountain does not belong to RTA. That land was in the county and voted into the RTA. And the state ruled that it stays in the RTA even if it's annexed into a city.
But who is RTA?
Pike's Peak Regional Transportation Authority is the member entity governments that are in that book, and it was formed many years ago.
19?
I'm sorry?
It was 19 years ago?
19 years ago, yeah.
So it is another level of government that takes our money and spends it. I'm just... I'm tired of...
Mr. Sonnenberg, can you give Mrs. Carrick one of your cards? And maybe you guys can have a meeting, and she can...
Oh, that would be great.
And ask a lot of questions about how RTA was formed, and get some of the history and stuff.
So is it another level of government that you guys collect money, and then you decide how our money is going to be spent?
So the member governments decide, that are in RTA, decide how the money is spent that is collected on their behalf?
We would decide that, Fran.
We would decide.
City of Fountain would decide that.
We would decide on the maintenance projects. We would decide on the capital projects we want voted... If we vote on that.
And that was some of the negative that I've heard about the RTA, is that they're not always approved for projects. The money is not always approved to come back to Fountain to fix their roads, or to go to Manitou Springs, or wherever.
Right, and that's why I think if you can meet with Mr. Sonnenberg potentially, and go and understand the path of how it works, I think it might answer some of your questions. And but the way it's written is, the money that we put in, we're going to get back for the maintenance dollars. Yeah.
And that's guaranteed.
Mr. Sonnenberg?
I think there's a two-part answer. The state legislature passed a law in 1997 allowing RTAs to exist. RTAs did not exist in the state until after 1997. The law says that an RTA can be formed by two member governments, two cities, a city, county, two counties, even a metro district that's in the transportation business. But two or more entities can go to their voters and ask for voter approval to establish an RTA. There are now about six in the state. There's one in Sterling. There's a couple on the Western Slope. There's one in Telluride. Pike's Peak RTA is the biggest. Some of the others are primarily transit, mass transit or bus systems. But RTAs are allowed by state law. And in 2002 and 2003, the City Council of Colorado Springs and Board of County Commissioners of El Paso County established a committee, a staff committee, to research whether or not establishing an RTA between the city and the county would be a good thing. So a couple of key staffers with the city and county worked up a white paper and presented that in 2003 to City Council and Board of County Commissioners. And they liked the idea. And then in 2004, the then-county engineer, John McCarty, made the rounds to the seven suburbs of Colorado Springs in El Paso County. And Manitou and Green Mountain Falls liked the idea, and they decided to jump on the bandwagon with City of Colorado Springs and El Paso County. So the four of those did go to their voters in November of '04, and that's how the RTA started. The way it works is whatever your retail market, your retail base generates with one cent sales tax is what is sent, is collected by Department of Revenue and sent to us on a monthly basis for whichever member governments are in the PPRTA. What you get back is based on population. Maintenance is based on population. Capital is based on population. And it's the most recent federal census. And every time there's a new federal census, we update the shares, and we carry that out to four decimal places to determine what your maintenance and capital shares are per year. So I hope I've answered your two-part question.
Yes. Can it ever be... Can you ever get... Remove yourself from PPRTA?
Yes.
The city... Would it take a vote to get... To back out of it?
Let me grab the establishing IGA. I think it's in Section 12. It's probably 12.1, 12.2. But yes, I think any City Council or Board of County Commissioner, any member governing body can vote to get out, if you'll give me a few seconds to grab that.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to go into some next questions after he answers this one for you. And then you can come back if your question doesn't get answered, okay?
Are buses involved in this?
I'm sorry?
Are buses, are they involved in this?
Our transportation?
Transportation. How are they impacted by this?
They wouldn't be right now, yeah. And it's a teeny, teeny, tiny fraction of a dollar that goes to Mountain Metro through this.
I missed it by one digit. Section 12.4, and again, this is the establishing IGA between the six member governments. It's not the member governments with the board. It's between the six member governments. 12.4, "Any party may terminate its participation in the authority by passage of a resolution of the governing body of the political subdivision, provided such resolution is passed by a two-thirds majority of the membership of the governing body." And no event may any party withdraw if it drops from two members to one, because the definition of RTA is two or more. So, but yes, by two-thirds vote, resolution at any time.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I don't think Ms. Black has been down yet to ask her two questions. Come on down. And then we'll go to Ms. Rowe after that.
Sandra Black is my name still. I have a question regarding, since Sam's Club is basically part of the RTA already, and they're annexed with Fountain, if Fountain were to join the RTA, would that revenue then add to our budget?
For road ma... The first year only for road maintenance, very specific on what it could be used for.
No, I'm just like, eventually...
Yes, if Fountain joined it, we would be like joining with them at this point, right? Because they're already part of it.
So think about that.
Yeah.
So you bring up a good point. I mean, we're already... We pay already that service already, but we don't see the benefits of that at all. And we've been paying ever since that Walmart and that district shopping plaza has gone up there, and we don't see a dime of that money. And so I really think it should just come back to the City of Fountain.
And that estimated dollars, Todd, is based on what is built there now, right? And they're already expanding into the next phase.
That's correct.
Yeah. Ms. Rowe, come on down and state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Karen Rowe, and I'm not a citizen of Fountain. I currently work for a consulting firm. However, I retired from CDOT as CDOT Director in March 2020. And I was part of getting a federal grant for the I-25 project that's going on now, the MAMSIP. And again, so my background is that transportation funding. And one of the things that was mentioned is, you know, once you have a little bit, you can get more. Well, there's a lot of federal grants out there right now that are up for 20% of state dollars, right? So City of Pueblo has gotten a federal grant. City of Alamosa has gotten a federal grant for a pedestrian bridge. And so if you get this money, you might be able to apply for a lot of the federal grants. Because under the Investment Act, Jobs Act, Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act, IIJA, there's a lot of grants that are now going to local agencies. And as you know, Sharon, PPACG just recently hired a consulting firm to help with grants and help get local agencies get more grants. So if you can get more money, like PPRTA money, that you can match federal money. So you might be able to take this little bit of money and make it even grow bigger. Because that's the direction CDOT's going now, is they're like, let's take the state money we have, and let's go after grants to get bigger projects and more funds. So that's just something to take into consideration. I don't have a stance one way or another. I'm just saying that for that project on I-25, we have a PPRTA. We have El Paso County. We have Bridge Enterprise, which is, you know, a vehicle registration fee that's used. And we were able to get an additional, I think it was $18 million of federal money in order to make that project whole. So just something to consider too, moving forward. Like you said, you're already collecting... They're already collecting the sales tax now, and you're not getting anything back. But that's another opportunity too.
And Karen, since you have the expertise here, can you go ahead and explain what you mean by match? Because a lot of people don't understand what you mean by match.
Okay, so when you go for federal funds, you generally, the feds say, "We'll give you 80 cents if you give us 20." So if you want $100,000 of a project, they'll say, "Okay, we'll give you $80,000 if you can fund for $20,000." So you bring $20,000 to the table, and they'll give you $80,000. And right now, the federal level is really into helping communities with a lot less money than the traditional, you know, more wealthy communities. So that's why I mentioned the City of Pueblo has gotten a federal grant, and Alamosa has gotten a federal grant. And recently, FHWA just hired a person full-time to help local agencies with these federal grants. So right now, there's a Safe Streets for All Federal Grant out there right now. There's a Wildlife Crossing Federal Grant thing, and even that is meant for urban areas. So there's a lot of federal grants you need. You don't have to go through CDOT to get it approved, and you can use these state dollars in order to go after those federal grants.
Thank you.
And Mayor, real quick, just to give everyone an idea of what Ms. Rowe's talking about, with our Indiana project, the 5.4 million that I talked about, we've worked with PPACG, we've worked with federal grants and those type of things. So that 5.4 million, 1.4 million is coming from developers that we had put specifically to that that are burdening that along Old Pueblo. Then there's another, I think, 3.5 million that is going to be coming from grants, different grants. There's probably three different grants that we've got on that. Then the remainder of that will come from Moving Fountain Forward. So it's been a huge key. But as Ms. Rowe said, you have to have money available, and you have to commit that money to get that, those matching funds from grants back. We just can't... Everybody thinks we can just apply for grants out there. But when they throw that matching number at us, we go, "We don't have it."
Thank you. Councilmember Estes?
I just want to make a comment for Ms. Carrick. Please remember, if you go talk to Reema in Green Mountain Falls, Reema is 109 people. So it's going to take them forever to get the kind of money we're talking, because it's population-based. So just remember that. Take that as a, you know, little hint there, because what they're doing out there, they're big projects for them. You know, doing their sidewalks is huge for them. But it's not going to be like we're talking. Because, you know, we're over 30,000 compared to 109. So remember that.
And some of those smaller entities, they have that budget. But sometimes they have to save that budget to be able to do a decent-sized project. So when you're doing public works projects, you can't just try to spend everything every year and try to not... You'll have to save for a few years to be able to do a larger project. We have to deal with that every day.
Mr. Clements texted me that he says on his side, only the meeting organizer can unmute him.
Mr. Clements should be able to use his microphone on my end. His microphone is allowed right now.
Okay, Mr. Clements, could you go ahead with your question? Okay, you can either put your question in the chat, and we can read it, or feel free to text me, and then we will read it for you. So we'll just go ahead. Hang on just a second. Okay, I think everybody in the room has had a question that wants to... Okay, Connie, come back with two more. And state your name again for the recording.
Connie Weisenhund. Todd, I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to this, just because I'm trying to understand it a little bit better, and maybe somebody else's too. So he talked about, and then on page five of this book, there's a graph on the top right-hand corner. So he talked about 55% being capital, 35% being metro, and then 10% being transit. But on the graph, it says that maintenance looks like it's taking the place of metro. So like, which one is it? And then what falls under those categories?
Okay, let's see. I'm not sure on the metro terminology, but Rick is checking it, so I think he'll correct me where need be. But specifically, the 55% for capital projects, that was the 3.5 million that's estimated that will come back? That's where we will have a list of our prioritized projects. So we will use that funding to specifically improve or replace roadways or infrastructure or intersections. Those would be capital projects. The maintenance itself, right now, I think it was 2.4 million that was estimated would come in. And remember, in the bylaws of PPRTA, we are not allowed to get rid of any current maintenance funding that we put aside for that. So that, like Bob said, on his numbers, that 600,000 that we currently spend on maintenance, that would continue to be spent on maintenance. So that 2.4 with PPRTA, our 600,000, we would have another 3 million that would go to maintenance. And when you talk about maintenance, that's two-inch mill and overlays on the roadways that Bob can do it. That's doing chip seals and cape seals. Like he said, when the scientific data say, "You need to do this to maintain the road, so it lasts you 20 years instead of 10 years," right? That's masticking the big cracks you'll see in roadways. That's doing digouts. So it was mentioned in some of the roads, you'll see where you really get a depression in the roadway. Whole road may not be needed to be replaced, but that section needs to be dug out, the base completely replaced, and then it gone over. Pothole filling. All of those things would be under the maintenance section, right? Sidewalk repair, curb and gutter. Ped ramps, I think, was mentioned, which is a huge priority for us. We need to improve our ADA capabilities in every neighborhood that we have. So it's everything from the curb and gutter, ped ramps, all the way through the asphalt. So it's basically, it allows us to maintain our complete transportation infrastructure. A lot of folks don't realize how much the curb and gutter, pedestrian ramps, and those things cost when you go in to replace a road. Very, very expensive. Does that help, Connie?
Yeah, and then what was the other?
Please come back up to the podium for your question, please.
I apologize.
That's okay.
What's the other that falls under transit? Because that's not just talking about bus or cabs or...
So right now, under, and Rick, you may need to help me on this, but there's bylaws for PPRTA that that 10% of transit money would go to Mountain Metro. Back in the inception of PPRTA, we didn't have our own bus service. We were served by Mountain Metro. Since then, after 2009 and Moving Fountain Forward, we started our own metro transit service, which is now fully funded by the Moving Fountain Forward Initiative money. So with that money, we would need to sit down with Mountain Metro and see if there's a way, and I don't know what the steps would be, to see if there's some way we could work with Mountain Metro on that piece of it. But at that point, that's, it would be cart before the horse right now. We want to see if it's supported fully, and then we would get into that piece with Mountain Metro.
So it's a 1% sales tax increase for the 10-year commitment, with that diagram being the lead? And then after 10 years, there's an opportunity to take that to something else?
That goes back to the voters every 10 years. And then the voters vote on again, whether they would like to extend the PPRTA for another 10 years. And then we would do another list of projects for that next 10 years. And then that would continue in perpetuity.
Great. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Mr. Sonnenberg has a follow-up, I believe.
The 55% capital is the only piece of the three pieces that's on a 10-year sunset. The 35% maintenance and the 10% transit do not have a sunset. Now, regarding the 10% transit, what's in our documents says that the City of Colorado Springs gets to decide, and the key phrase is, if they want to spend some of their money outside of their department, then it has to be a city-sponsored transit activity. And then, of course, since day one, we have had four outside agencies outside of Mountain Metro that they have funded through the PPRTA. Fountain Valley Seniors, Silver Key, Ambulcab, that's now Envita, and Community Intersections. So those four specialized transportation providers were declared by the City of Colorado Springs to be city-sponsored transit activities. So your challenge would be to talk to Mountain Metro and try to become a city-sponsored transit activity to get a little piece of that pie.
And we've had a couple of those conversations, and there's been no commitments whatsoever. But we've always had our transit system and Mountain Metro's always had a good relationship. And I have confidence that they'll be open to us sitting down and talking to them. When you have a transit system, it's not a big moneymaker, folks. It's a money loser, both for Mountain Metro, for us, and for everybody else. So Mountain Metro is not sad that we have our own transit system down here, and they're no longer serving us. So it's a win-win. And Rick mentioned some of the regional partners we partner with, Fountain Valley Senior Center. So that's something that I have confidence we can sit down and come to a good agreement on.
While I have the floor, I'd like to take a few more seconds and say that our member governments put on the 10-year capital list for PPRTA III, which starts in January 1st of 2025, a new capital project name called State and Federal Grant Match Fund. Now, that's just an empty bucket of a name, but it's eligible project. But if a member government finds a state or federal grant, then they'd have to put some of their annual budget share into that fund to use as a match.
Okay, great. Does that be another way? Ms. Chaminade, for your two questions?
She spoke about Pueblo and grants. So is Pueblo a part of PPRTA?
No. She was just talking about just grants in general. Right.
Okay. I'm still trying to figure out why, if we vote for 1% tax increase, why would we funnel the money through Colorado Springs? What are our benefits for doing that? Is it because, he mentioned, we might get more back in return than what we're paying in? Is that why?
So first of all...
I mean, specifically, I want to know. To me, it's like we're muddying the water. When, if we're going to vote for a 1% tax increase, why wouldn't we just do that and let our city government handle the money and do what needs to be done?
Mayor, could I jump in real quick? I get first tip.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
First of all, I want to make sure, you said the money goes through Colorado Springs. It does not go through Colorado Springs. The money goes through Pike's Peak Rural Transit Authority. So I want to get that on record, correcting that. Okay.
But we're adding someone.
If we do our own type enterprise fund, we don't get any of that money that's already being collected up at the Sam's Club, Vinatutti, Walmart.
So that's the incentive.
That money is going to continue to go to RTA as long as RTA exists and they keep voting it in. We will get none of that money. And then their sales tax, because they're part of the City of Fountain, would go up another 1% for shopping up there. And so it just doesn't make sense to raise their sales tax when we already have money that we could be getting from... And, and so it just doesn't make sense to raise their sales tax when we already have money that we could be getting from, from there.
So that's part of the real problem right there.
And Penny, I've, I've had folks ask me...
That's a shame. That's a shame.
I've had folks ask me, and they said, well, no entity would give you money back that they're not getting in, right? But there's no way that any of the finance folks can say exactly how much money Fountain residents are spending in Security and Whitefield, are spending in Colorado Springs, right? We can, we can, the numbers are good about what tax revenue we're getting in the City of Fountain. But, but I can pretty confidently say, people are going up into Colorado Springs and probably spending that difference. So it's truly a way that we can get all of that money and bring it back to the City of Fountain without just giving it to the rest of the PPRTA boundary entities. Because we, we can say we kind of know what revenue's coming out of South Academy Highlands. Probably 1.2 we're losing just on that. We can, we know what's coming in at the rest of our entities, and that's where the projection numbers come from. But it's really hard to say, how much do City of Fountain residents go up with? How, what's the rest of the money they spend in Colorado Springs where they're, where they're paying that 1% tax, right?
Well, we wouldn't get that, correct?
Oh, yeah.
If we go to Colorado Springs and...
Oh, yeah.
How would they know?
That's, that's probably the gap in the five points, whatever we would get back to the 3.75 that we're putting in. The rest of that money, we're all out there spending in Colorado Springs, and that's going somewhere. So that's probably the difference. Nobody can ever put a good, a good number together and say Fountain residents spend exactly this much in Colorado Springs. There's no way to tell that. But it's probably right up to that number. But then you have an ability to capture that funding and bring it back to Fountain, where right now it goes up to El Paso County and Colorado Springs.
So PPRTA kind of has us over a barrel, in a way.
No, 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 they don't, they, they don't need us to join them.
We want the money from, from the part that we annexed. We want that money.
That would be nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's my point.
But, but no, they don't have us over a barrel, and they're not forcing anything. We've gone, yeah, we've gone to request this for them. They, they're doing just fine on their own.
Yeah, that's a pretty good thing going on.
But see, one thing that everybody needs to realize, a, a regional transportation network needs to be a regional transportation network. And when Scott and I joined the, the PPRTA meeting, I was very impressed with the board members that discussed. It needs to be a regional solution. And it can't, you know, the improvements can't stop at City of Fountain boundaries. It needs to be, the network has to be region-wide. So if we're not doing any improvements down here, the whole south end of the county's in trouble.
And we're impressed with the people on the board right now. That changes.
It, it does change, but the, the concept of what they've done over 19 years...
Well, that's what I want to see, and I haven't seen exactly that yet. And he says they don't do what you do.
If, if this program was a year old, two years old, that kind of thing, I'd probably have those same questions. But, but I've seen the improvements that it's, it's effectively done over 19 years.
I think, I think Fountain citizens need to see those, they need to see the numbers like you did to show how it has improved in Colorado Springs so that it's visible, so that people can know exactly what they've done for Colorado Springs.
You bet. Our biggest challenge is if the council decides to move forward to this, is truly the education. It's the education piece of that. That we have got to get that education out, education out. Let everybody ask any questions they would like to ask, and then have specific answers for them. That's, that's our challenge.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I would like to see some...
Councilmember Rick has a comment, please.
Penny? I just want to make a quick comment. For every dollar that the Fountain taxpayers pay for that 1%, we're going to get back about a dollar and 60 cents.
Okay, and that, that was part of my question.
That, that's where...
And we are guaranteed that.
Yes. Now, we, we have to get the voters to approve it, and we have to get the voters to approve tho, that project list. But we legally can't spend that money on anything else other than those, the road maintenance that Robert talked about and the capital projects the voters approve. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Corey?
Yes, something also too, I know a lot of people have mentioned Fountain Highlands, the Walmart up there. I work on Fort Carson. I know for a fact, there is a lot of soldiers that use that Walmart up there. They don't, it doesn't bother them paying that extra 1%. Doesn't matter. Listen, you know, if we go forward with this, if we move into PPRTA, that's one of part of our customer base, is that Walmart. A big part of their customer base right now is Fort Carson. Those soldiers realize, hey, there's, you know, Walmart right outside of Gate, Gate 3, Gate 4. I know where I live, I know, I live near the Walmart on 85, 87. There's a lot of people that come across the tracks from, from Whitefield Security. They don't, I mean, I don't think a 1%, you know, increase on their grocery bill, I don't think that's going to make them stop coming to Walmart like altogether, so. That's something we got to consider, yes. Right, it's borders, it's borders. It's like when we're right near a border or something else, we're benefiting from other people coming there and using that, you know, using that place.
And, and our King Supers that we get is going to be more than groceries. It's, they're called, they say it puts the King in King Supers. So they're going to have a lot of other things that would be taxed, since groceries, most groceries are not taxed. Not all, but most, okay. I think Steve had his hand up next. Please come down, your two questions.
Steve RC. So in principle, I'm not saying I'm, I'm for this right away, but in principle, I, I want to be clear that I understand it. Because if it's what I think it is, then it makes a great deal of sense. So if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but in the purest sense of what you're saying is, you want us to join a co-op. You want us to pool our money, and that money gets sent back to us collectively. So everybody that's a part of this puts in that 1%, which, 1%, yes, but I think everybody notices 1%. Just saying. But 1%, and we all get it back. It's a co-op. It's, it's, that's basically what we're saying. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's a fair analogy. That's, I think that's a fair analogy, yes.
But I think the only, the only difference is, the money put in is based upon the sales tax, and the money we get back is based upon population. And when you do that calculation, the City of Fountain is going to benefit.
Correct. We're, we're getting a, we're getting a benefit out of it because we're pooling our money and we're, we're, we're being given what we need out of it, based upon our population.
Ms. Carrick, come down with your two questions.
It's really just, Frank Carrick on Chumway Road. It really is just more of a comment. We have 35,000 people here, and we have, we're, we're a fast food kingdom. And we need, I, I said this a year ago, I feel like Fountain is stale. And I talked with Orin Legree today, and he is out of the water. The grocery store, you probably all know, is not coming to Fountain. Because, because King Supers is coming in. So yay, yay. But there is not a store in this town where you can buy a man, a man suit, or I could buy a cocktail dress. There's, there's nothing here. So yes, I go to Colorado Springs to buy a lot of things, and, and my taxes are up there. What, what are we, what are we missing here? What is missing? 20...
Okay, please refrain from calling out in the audience.
20 years ago, we were told, all we need to do is get some rooftops in here, and we'll get some businesses. And it has not happened. We've tripled in size. And I, I, I mean, I see both sides of this. I'm still thinking about it. I don't know, I don't know which way I'll go. I, I know Fountain needs some money because Fountain never has any money. We never have any money for anything. We don't have a community building. We don't have a swimming pool. We, we, I, I am so frustrated.
Ms. Carrick, can I get you to keep your comments to the RTA issue on hand, please?
Well, I suppose. Yes, but it's all a big ball. It's, it's all a big ball, Sharon. It all, everything is all together in this. 1%, may not seem like much, but let me tell you, for people living on, on incomes that are stable, retirement incomes, 1% makes a lot of difference. Because the federal government, we're in a recession right now, as far as I'm concerned. So, and, and we just had this lovely tax increase, the bond issue for the cops. I, I'm thrilled with that. I, I'm just not sure about this.
That's why we're having a lot of education sessions, to answer people's questions and, and concerns, and then you make up your mind. Mr. Hinton?
Just a comment. I think it was Connie, is that your name? Is it the, right there behind?
Penny?
Penny, Penny. So just a comment on yours. I think there might, and, and Todd said it right, it's going to be a lot of education about PPRTA. When you said, hey, you know, it's not just the, the Walmart that's up, up, up there. It's in Colorado Springs. Anybody that's part of PPRTA, where you spend our money, not everybody spends their money in Fountain. And I get, and I get your point too, Fran, about, you know, having that here. But people do go outside and they spend that money there. So, and we're not, we're not receiving any of that. The City of Fountain does not receive any of that. So, you know, being part of PPRT will give us that opportunity to receive those funds. Your hard-earned money that you spend elsewhere, where we don't have those facilities here, and, and in their future, hopefully, we will have those facilities here, and we'll be able to collect that money. But right now, we just don't. And, and as we move Fountain forward, those are part of the plan. That's part of the plan, to bring those businesses in here and, and, and get that. But it's a process.
Ms. Connie, come down and state your name for the record, please.
As a member of the community, I just want to state, oh, Connie Weisenhund, sorry. As a member of the community, I just want to state that we all collectively, in my opinion, want it to be a beautiful city, want it to be attractive to people coming to visit. We want the people moving in to continue moving in with their children, which gives more schools, which hopefully will give us things to give to the children, and businesses coming in. But we're not going to do that if we're looking run down. And I think that it's important that we seriously consider this, because we can't do everything alone. We have to partner with people who have good intentions for our city as well. And I just want to throw in there that Connie's cupboard has cocktail dresses and men's suits. Thank you.
All right, this has been a great discussion. It's been a long discussion. I, I know Mr. Clement was online. He said he was going to call Todd tomorrow, but then he texted me back and said, you answered his question, so you may or may not hear from him tomorrow. Just for some reason, couldn't seem to get unmuted. The hour's getting late, everybody wants to get home before the snowstorm starts. So is there any last questions? All our email addresses are online. We do not take this lightly. We, we know it's everybody's hard-earned money. We know we went to the ballot last year and asked you to invest in our Public Safety Department. And, and thank you, we really, really appreciate that you came to the table and passed that. We do not take this, again, lightly. If, if this, if this just decides to go to the ballot, we don't take it lightly. But the number one complaint we have heard from people in this town, besides a sit-down steakhouse, is the roads. And I've heard it ever since I moved to this town. And various councils over the years have been able to increase the funding, 50,000 here, $100,000 there. A few years ago, we gave a one-time kind of lump fee to, to get things, you know, going a little bit better. And, but I just, and we've, so we've tried lots of things. And, and we're hearing what people are saying. This is your chance to, to speak up, to do your research. Thank you, Rick, for bringing the books. I think that really helps, and the fact that you can just tell people to go online and, and look it up. Ask your questions, send your emails, let us know your opinions. There's, there's a lot going on right now statewide, nationwide. We don't take this lightly. We just want to throw this out as an option for our community. And what the citizens decide is what the citizens decide. But we have heard everybody loud and clear that the roads are in bad shape, and we're going to be driving on dirt in 10 years. Personally, I don't think that's going to do much for your property value, especially on a night like tonight, when we have to drive through all the mud and everything. And so please continue the conversation and the questions coming. Todd's, burn up his email. Right?
Send me an email, call Bob, I'm good with that. We're, we're okay with that.
Send your questions to me for clarification to Mr. Sonnenberg. Reach out to him, he's been doing this for a number of years. And if he doesn't have the answer between the two of them, they'll answer it. And, and please communicate that, that's how we're going to, you know, make a decision on this. So Todd...
And Rick, we appreciate you coming tonight.
Yes, thank you so much.
Just your expertise and your experience, we appreciate that.
All right, thank you so much. So unless anybody has, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next item on our agenda. I don't see anybody waving their hands or jumping up and down. Oh, please come on down and state your name for the record, and you're the last person on this tonight. Then we're going to move on to the next thing.
Okay, this won't take very long.
Mr. Rick, just sit down.
I've lived, I've lived in Little Ranches for almost 27 years.
And state your name for the record, please.
I'm sorry, my name is Ron Wilson.
Thank you.
And we've lived in Little Ranches for almost 27 years, built a house out there when the populations in Fountain were a lot less than they are today. And we saw improvements to those roads. County government gave City of Fountain monies to pay back in there, and those roads were done improperly. All right, Mr. McDonald? They were done improperly, and those roads have fallen apart. Now, I worked in this business for 30 years. And then I taught high school down here, at your high school, for 10, in the social studies department. But I still remember the problems that this city has gone through. And when this proposal for joining PRT was originally imposed, you know, put out there, City Council turned it down. I talked to the city manager at the time, Greg Nyhoff. My son played baseball with him, with his son, I should say. And Greg thought it was a huge mistake, the City Council didn't take this to the voters. Okay, I've seen PRT work, and it does work, and it can work for everybody. I know a lot of people are afraid down here in the valley that the money's going to go to Colorado Springs, and none of it's ever going to come back. And that's not true, because it works for Green Mountain Falls, it worked for Manto Springs, Galheim. I found something today that I didn't know, Raymond was incorporated. That's a little tiny town, and I grew up in Peyton. So this works for everybody in this county. All cities are going to get something out of it if they join. And I was horribly disappointed when the City Council at the time said no. And Greg was pretty, pretty disappointed too. We had some long discussions at a baseball game one night, talking about it. And my question was, is how stupid is the City Council? I don't think any of you guys were here then, so I'm hoping it was another group of people.
It's just a rhetorical question, right?
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to slam you guys, but that group was, was short-sighted.
Some humor right now is good.
Yeah, yeah, they were pretty short-sighted. So I'm hoping, and I, and I did do one of your surveys online.
Good, thank you.
And I was pretty honest about how I feel about it, and you're kind of hearing it now. I'm hoping you guys are all a part of this too. And seeing that the only way this town is going to catch up with its problems is if we take and join a consortium of the, of other entities to do these things that we kind of work together to get things done. Okay? And I think PRT is a good thing. I was a part of the discussions on a very, very low level at County Transportation Department back when it was began, because I worked for 30 years at El Paso County DOT. And it works. Give it a chance. Beg, plead your voters. Get out there and stump for this, because it's important.
I, I remember standing at your door when I was campaigning for mayor.
I'm sorry?
I remember standing at your door when I was campaigning for mayor, and that was one of your passions was...
I can stomp my feet and pound my hand a few times.
But, so I hope you see, we're trying desperately to fulfill that and find something for the voters to do.
Yeah, well, I'm starting to see that, I was a little unsure at first. But this is my home. This was my, where my kids grew up. This is where they went to high school, prep for college, and went on to successful careers. This is a good place. It's always gotten a bad rap. It's a good place.
Thank you.
Support us, please.
Well, good comments to wrap it, wrap up the discussion on. All righty, that takes us to item 10, Correspondence Comments and Ex officio Reports. Mr. Evans, do you have anything else to say tonight? Troy?
I, I am making a request for two executive sessions this evening that are not on the agenda. But that's all that I have.
Two executive sessions. Okay, Sylvia, do we handle that now or wait till the end? Wait till the end, okay. All righty, Mr. McDonald, anything else to say tonight?
Nothing further.
No? Commander Cristiani?
Madam Mayor, nothing to report, thank you.
All right, IT?
Nothing to report.
Okay, City Clerk?
Nothing tonight, thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Sonnenberg, any last words? You've said enough, huh? Okay. All right, thank you. Mayor Protem Estes?
Just a couple, real quick things. A shout-out, it is National Laboratory Workers Week too. So I want to give a shout-out to all those people that work in pathology and work in our medical laboratories. They're doing a great job out there too. And I attended last night the Arkansas River Forum Dinner for local officials. Ms. Duncan and Mr. Applegate joined us. Ms. Duncan and Mr. Applegate joined us, and that's a great piece of that. Dan and Taylor are representing the city there during the forum. They're doing an awesome job, as well as the Watershed District is there also representing this area. And so just a shout-out that that is going on right now. And the Watershed is having their meetings back in person, right here in this room. And the next one is May 19th at 9:00 AM.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Applegate?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Duncan?
Nothing tonight. I, I just want to echo that I was at the Arkansas River Basin Water Leaders Dinner last night, and I will try to be there. Are they there the rest of the week?
No.
No? Okay.
All right. Councilmember Hinton?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Corey?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Rick?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right. Well, I appreciate the councilmembers that represented us there. I, I asked Councilmember Estes to go and represent, since she's the chairman of that board. And I appreciate the others being able to go also, so thank you very much. I hope you had a good dinner. So, yeah, been super busy with legislative stuff. Of course, the major bill you've heard us talking about is Senate Bill 23-213, the land grab. I mean, the land use bill the state is trying to do. I think land grab is more appropriate. There were some changes that came down tonight that are proposals. However, there's no guarantee they will be accepted on the Senate floor or when it goes to the House, so the battle is still raging. They want to take, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, the state wants to ultimately take away home rule authority, and they want to be able to tell, basically approve anything and everything goes. You, you could potentially have an investor purchase three or four lots on your property and decide to raise all the houses on it and put apartments right next door to you in a residential neighborhood. So this is huge, and they would not be required to increase the parking. So I hope if they do that, they're going to tell their tenants, they're going to be parking four blocks away and hiking it in. And they're going to be telling their tenants that, that they're going to be showering every other day, I guess, because there's no requirement to increase water taps for those buildings they would be putting in. So familiar yourself, familiarize yourself with Senate Bill 23-213. Take a few minutes tomorrow and write the committee members on that, and tell them that they need to adopt the amendment that's been proposed, or they need to kill the bill, because they are taking local control away for how we want our cities to look, and we're looking just to the state for density, density, density. And it sounds like they just think if you build enough, the prices will eventually go down, that people can afford it. I don't, haven't seen that work too often. So I think we do need to figure out a way to address some affordable housing in the state, but this is not the bill. This is not the way to do it. Let's have a conversation with everybody in the state and then figure out what's going to work, not just from the top down. I think we all know when things get shoved down from the top, how well they go. Todd, did you have another comment?
No, I just, the question, do we want to go into break, Mayor? Would you like to go right into exec, and I'll take care of the door?
I'm going to get there in 30 seconds or less, or less. Okay, I just got to do my 213 round. Okay. All righty. So Ms. Huffman, that goes over to you, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I am asking on behalf of our city attorney, Troy Johnson, just for legal purposes. I am requesting a executive session pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-4024B for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific, specific legal questions, and CRS Section 24-6-4024E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators. That's my request for Mr. Johnson tonight.
Okay, we have a request from the city clerk. What would council like to do? Councilmember Estes?
I move to go into executive session.
Councilmember Hinton?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion on a second to go into executive session. Please vote. Five yes, two no. Councilmember Rick and Councilmember Applegate voting no. Motion carried. All right. The sooner we can clear the room, if y'all can talk out there, the sooner we can get going home, okay? All right. Does that work? You can all talk, just not...